We're live now and I'm just making sure Byron's not in the attendees. Okay, you're good.
Okay, so welcome everyone to the April edition, the April 21st, 2021 Concord City Planning Board. We'll call this meeting to order. I'll read in a quick notice on the E COVID protocols here and then we'll get started. So as Chair of the Concord New Hampshire Planning Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020 04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are A providing a public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to can communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through clicking the following website address, which is zoom.us/j/754076629 or by dialing the following phone number 9292086099 and entering the password 754076629. For those calling in who want to provide public testimony, please dial star nine to alert the host that you'd like to speak. The host will unmute you during the public portion hearing of the meeting. B is to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to this public meeting and we previously gave access to the public on how to access this meeting using the Zoom platform. Instructions are provided on the City of Concord's website at wwwconcordnh.gov/273/planningboard. And C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting. If there are problems with access, if anyone is having a problem with access, please call 032258515 or send an email to planning@concordnh.gov. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are to be taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. When each member states their pleasant presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right to know law. With that, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodburn?
Here and I'm alone in the room.
Counselor Champlin?
I am present and I am alone in the room in my house.
Member Fox?
I am here and present and I am all by myself.
Member Santa Cruz?
Here and alone.
Member Rosenberg?
I'm here and I'm alone in my house.
Member Smithmire?
I'm here and alone.
Member Regan?
Here and alone.
And Member Hicks?
I'm here and alone in my office.
Okay, so with that, we've got a lot of here and alone people. Everybody's lonely.
So sad.
That's sad.
We'll welcome Counselor Champlin to the table tonight and recognize that he is sitting in for Counselor Pierce as our, as our city council representative. So you picked a good night to come in, Byron. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to be back.
We do have a roll, we do have a quorum, so we will open the meeting. We'll go right to item three on our agenda, which is to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2020 Planning Board minutes as submitted, please make that motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is made by Jeff Santa Cruz and seconded by David Fox. All those in favor by roll call.
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
I wasn't there, but I'll say aye.
Okay, thank you. Member Regan?
Aye.
And Member Hicks?
Aye.
Okay, as a quick agenda overview, we have one item that will not be heard tonight. Is that right Heather? Item 5A TF Moran on behalf of KRC Finance. Is that correct?
Uh, so.
The continuance, the application request of continuance to the May 17th Planning Board meeting?
The, yes, so they are, that's a continuance for the determination of completeness.
Okay, so if anybody's here regarding that particular item, which I don't think there probably is, we will not be hearing that tonight. And everything else is on the agenda will be heard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move on in our agenda items here. Let me just do a little housekeeping and with me here. Okay, so we have on the agenda for designer view by consent. Items 6A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Would any member of the board like to pull any of those items from the consent agenda? No? Any member of the audience wish to pull any of those items from the consent agenda? Consent agenda for the audience is we're going to vote in these in their entirety with the recommendations that Architectural Designer View has made. If anyone is opposed to any of these, if you could please make yourself known to the host now. If not, we will move on and address all of those in one fell swoop. Do you see anybody Heather?
I do. I have Stephen. Hold on while I get to. Steve, Stephen, if you, yeah, there you are. You need to unmute yourself. Okay. I'm trying to allow him to speak, but all I'm able to do is ask him to unmute. Are you there Stephen? If you are, you are muted and you need to unmute yourself. Unless that was an accident.
If it's, yeah, if you want to, if you want to talk, why don't you raise your hand again? If not, we're going to, oops.
I just promoted him to panelist to see if that worked out. He, I think he ordered his pen himself, so it's not a tear that he did.
Let's take him out of that then and do you see anybody else with their hand up? I don't see anybody else with their hand up. So let's go ahead and would someone like to make a motion to approve those items by consent on 6A through 6G?
Some of.
Second.
Motion is made by Suzanne Smithmire and seconded by David Fox. All those in favor by roll call?
I was here, I was there. I was originally on it just.
You're still, you're still muted. We can't hear you. We can see you.
Interesting.
We can see you, but we can't hear you.
He's a mime.
Yeah.
Is he a Zoom bomber?
He's a Zoom bomber.
Kick him out.
Kick him out.
Yeah, I'm trying, but I can't find him on here. So, oh, there we go.
I've never been bombed before.
Well, thank you for bombing us. We haven't been bombed before.
This is my first experience too.
I guess more, I just.
I got bombed by Bob Ross the other day.
No way.
Yeah, worried about all the happy little trees.
Heather, you can see him right there as a panelist.
When people are nothing better.
I was trying to put him back into the attendees and I wasn't able to do it.
I think he's gone.
Yeah.
I did that, yeah.
Just a point, a point to make. I think Byron, sometimes it can be a mime. We're never.
Depending on the meeting.
Depending on the meeting, right.
Mark that one down as a.
That was so funny.
Okay.
A for originality.
So again, we've got a motion and a second on the table for consent. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just, my brain is still trying to process.
Counselor Champlin?
Counselor Champlin? Okay, thank you. Mime Champlin. Uh, member Smithmire?
Uh, yes.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
And Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Those signs are approved as submitted with Architectural Designer View recommendations. Move into the public hearing section of our meeting tonight. We'll go right into item 7A, which is Advantage Signs on behalf of Wilcox and Barton requesting ADR approval for the replacement of an externally illuminated wall and non-illuminated projecting sign at 10 Pleasant Street Extension in the Central Business Performance CBP District. Architectural Designer View notes on this was extensive regarding a couple of, a couple of signs. One's a blade sign and another one is a sign that's going to be faced on Store Street. This is the old Monitor Building that was on Pleasant Street Extension. It's going to be the new Wilcox and Barton home and we welcome them roundly to the, to the city, well, to the city. But Architectural Designer View had some questions on the the format, I believe Sam, if you could help me out on the, on the format of the sign and recommended that it be pushed out to the May meeting. Is that correct?
Sure, so ADR's concerns were relative to how the blade sign was mounted to the wall. The bracket seemed undersized based on the visual weight of the sign. Josh from Advantage Signs had sent me a revision and I am happy to throw that up. I also believe that we have a member of ADR in the attendees here tonight, Claude Gentlehome. If he is interested, he's certainly welcome to raise his hand and participate in discussion. If you'd like, I can share the screen to show the revised sign.
That'd be great.
So this is the blade sign and then this is the, this is the bracket and this is the revised version.
This is the revised version. So what, what did they, what was there before and what were the concerns before? And does this alleviate the concerns from ADR?
The overall concern.
There was a weight issue more than anything, if I remember.
It was a visual weight issue. The bracket seemed undersized for the sign. Not a structural issue, just more of a visual.
Okay.
And I do believe Josh is here as well. He's certainly welcome to speak on this.
Okay. All right. Thanks for sharing that, Sam. I think we got a visual of what, what's happening there. So again, the, the recommendations I think were to approve the wall sign as submitted from ADR, this is the recommendation of ADRs to prove the wall sign as submitted and to revise the blade sign specifically for visual weight and size as well as the bracket details and to resubmit. If, if I'm reading it right, looking at it right, I think they've probably met the intent of that and I don't know that we need to hold it up any farther as far as sending it back to ADR and then back to us. Is that fair, Sam?
I would say that is your purview.
Okay, and I noticed the hand go up, Josh from Advantage Signs. So why don't we recognize him Heather if we can and.
Sure, did we actually open the public hearing? I wouldn't.
I think we did, didn't we?
Well, we'll, I guess we'll consider open now.
We'll consider it open now. And welcome Josh from Advantage Signs. I think he's muted, so.
You can turn on your video and or unmute yourself because you're muted at the moment.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. This is Josh with Advantage Signs. I just wanted to touch base on Sam's comment.
Uh-oh.
And basically the bracket has been redesigned as Sam stated and it will be made of quarter inch thick aluminum and will have stabilizer bars. So we added the stabilizer bars and added the, up to quarter inch aluminum for, it will be. It'll have flat stock on the top and the bottom as well as a brace that will be on the building as well.
Okay. And I don't think there was anything else other than the, other than the just of the visual weight and that will add to the visual weight. Is that what, how I'm reading that?
Yeah, the, the way it was never concerned to us.
Right, not the physical weight of the sign, but the, the way it was hanging on the wall, it just looked a little bit odd without a beefier bracket.
Yes, so I think everything should be all set.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Any questions, Josh, from the, from the members of the board? No? Thank you very much. Any other member of the audience have any questions regarding this application? If not, we will close the public hearing. And I'll make a recommendation that we approve that sign as submitted with Architectural Design recommendations regarding the, the, the weight, the, the, I don't know if it's not the physical weight, it's just the, the look of the, of the sign has been increased and beefed up and I think that will solve that, that question. So I'll make that motion to approve as submitted.
Sorry. I just had an email from Claude. I'm, I'm sending him the link now. He requested that for comments. I don't know if he has anything additional to say. So I don't know if you want to hold off on that.
Okay. Whoops, I saw our hand go up.
Do you want to reopen the public hearing?
Yeah, so let's reopen the public hearing.
Hi Claude, I just promoted you to panelist, so you have audio and video now to unmute yourself.
Yeah, uh, no, I, you know what? I just want to let you know I didn't have any comment on it, but I thank you for sending it.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Stick around and enjoy the rest of the meeting, Claude. Thanks.
Oh, I plan on.
Thanks for your help. Okay, so I think we got a motion and a second on the table. Like, who seconded that? David? So we second, motion and a second by David. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Um, Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries and that sign is approved. Let's move on to item 7B in our agenda, A and M Signs on behalf of Rupert Dance LLC requests approval for the relocation and replacement of an internally illuminated sign at 105 Manchester Street in the Highway Commercial District. So the applicant, I think, is even though it's a couple of different names there, A and M Signs and Rupert Dance LLC, it's for Empire Pools at the Greenland's property. Is that correct? Heather or Sam? Yes?
Yes, I'm saying.
Yes, that's correct.
So this is a proposal to replace a freestanding sign and to move up the reader sign. If you look in your packet, you'll see that it's been moved up in one picture and it was the previous sign where it was way down in the middle. Looks like signs have already been taken out from the inside and the reader sign is proposed to be moved up to the top. Extensive conversation about this at ADR. Looks like they had several different conversations regarding the different sizes. And then Mr. NATO, who's from code enforcement, gave some overviews of sign history. It's out of compliance with height, but apparently has been grandfathered in. Lower signs cannot be calculated for the frontage to calculate the amount of area obtained. There was some question on how the signs were installed. Asked the sign company and Mr. NATO stated that the sign company is not familiar with or is willing to comply with city ordinances. So I have that highlighted on my ADR notes here. He's been working to make the signs compliant for a few months and it's a very time consuming process and I'm sure it is a time consuming process, but that's, that's hardly our concern as far as what it takes for, for the sign to be in compliance. So Mr. Gentlehome was a member of the Architectural Designer Review, made a motion to table the application to the next month, request revisions be submitted showing consistency with all the design elements. And again, it's in your, it's in your packet, including text and fonts. So that's the, the recommendation from Architectural Designer View. I do want to open the public hearing since we do have a public hearing on it and recognize or see if the sign applicants here can give us an update on the sign or the applicants here and would like to speak to the validity of the sign, that's fine too. So you see anybody Heather with their hand up?
No, he indicated that he would want to appear, but he, I don't see him on the list of attendees, so.
Okay, well, 7:22, going once, going twice. We will close the public hearing. Recommendation is again for Architectural Designer View to get this sign back. So would someone like to make a motion to push this sign back to Architectural Designer View for.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded.
Oh, I'm actually, I'm getting, someone says their hand right now. It's just, it's not his name.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we're reopening the public hearing?
So we'll reopen the public hearing.
Okay, I'm not sure who this is, but I'm allowing you to speak.
Hello?
Yes?
Yes, hello.
Hi, my name is Jeff Hurebody. I'm from Empire Pools.
And Kevin Sutarian too.
I, I just promoted you to panelist so that we could see you.
Okay.
Can you, can you unmute yourselves?
Both from Empire Pools?
Yeah.
We're new at this. We don't really know how this works.
No, that was, that was my fault. I promoted you to panelist and it kicked you back into mute. So if you had, had video, you'd be able to use it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to open you up here because it just put it all down. Yeah, we're from Empire Pools and we've been getting different conflicting stories here. So we just wanted to get on and, and talk to people. We, we requested that our sign company just replace the sign faces that were existing. We didn't change anything. We didn't change any sign sizes. We actually removed a sign. And Bob NATO told us that we just had to go for a variance because we were unaware that we needed a permit just to, to change the, the writing on the sign faces. And so we, we applied for a variance, which we were told there is no hardship, so we couldn't get a variance. And then they said just apply for the permit. So what we've done. And we're just trying to figure out how we go about this and what we need to do to make it so that we're in good standing and compliant.
Is, is the sign company not helping you with this?
They're not. They're a smaller company out of Manchester. We've been using them for years. But I don't think they do much work in the Concord area, so they were not familiar with anything that needed to be done. I mean, we take the blame on that. We should have looked a little, little harder at it. We didn't. We thought just replacing what was there in kind wouldn't change anything. Apparently we were wrong.
Yeah, yeah, it does. It changes and it opens it all up. And again, it's a, it's a, it's a well-defined process and the sign people that do business in Concord know, you know, know what the business is. And, and again, we're going to talk a lot about this and, and other signs as well because we're getting an awful lot of people just doing what they want and, and putting signs up where and, and how they want. So again, I, I think the, the intent of this isn't to hold you up and, and, but we need to make sure it's done right. We need to work the process, which is Architectural Designer View. They're the ones who are going to say it needs to be this color, it needs to be this font and, and you can disagree with them and that's fine. But we need to get a recommendation from them that says, you know, we're fine with the sign and we recommend that it be blue or we recommend it be white or, you know, we recommend the, the not be, you know, not have phone numbers this large or whatnot. So there's a fair amount of work that's done at Architectural Designer View, so we don't have to do it here at the Planning Board and, and, and let people kind of fish through all of the issues and get them resolved. Now, again, I don't, I don't want to hold you up, but I, I, I need to know from, you know, from staff, are we looking at anything that's out of the ordinary regarding moving up the existing sign and are there any issues with, you know, moving a sign from one location to the other as far as the reader sign?
Well, no, there was no, there's no issue with the relocation of the sign. In fact, it's a, it's a reduction in the overall signage on that freestanding pylon. ADR's recommendation was relative to consistency of text fonts. And that was primarily the main issue.
Can I, can I? I just want to point out that it's not a replacement of the same sign. It's a completely different sign. It's a different design. It's, it's a different business.
Right.
So when he says he's replacing in kind, he's referring to the size of the sign.
Yeah, not the content.
Completely, it's a new sign. It's a completely new sign.
Sign, sign and shape. My question for you is, we removed one sign. Um, my question for you is, um, we removed one sign.
Actually two.
Two, yeah, and we didn't have anything to put back in there. So that's the way that is. The only reason we're even discussing moving the reader board up is because Bob NATO told us that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
So with discussions with Bob, we said, okay, we can probably figure out how to do that and move that up to cover the open hole. Um, my question to you guys is, as I stood out on, uh, Manchester Street today and I looked down Manchester Street and I looked at the giant billboard for Bank Chevrolet and I looked at everybody else's signs in the area. There's nobody that has a sign that has the same font, top and bottom, sign to sign. There's nobody that has any standard color schemes. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I think our signs are professionally done and I think they look very, very well, you know, good. But compared to some of the other signs that are on Manchester Street, I, I think we have one of the better looking signs. So I'm a little confused on, on the requirements here. I mean, it's done professionally. It looks good. It's not offensive. The colors are white and blue. So I, I, I'm just, that's my question is I, I'm, I'm concerned that we're being singled out here. Um, cause like I said, if any of you have driven up and down Manchester Street, uh, i- i- it's a free for all. I think ours is the most consistent sign on that whole street.
Okay, Heather?
So, um, when they, when they're talking about consistency, they're talking about between two signs that represent the same business. And for the driver to understand that both of those signs are for the same business. Um, when he's talking about all the signs up and down the street don't match, in most of those cases, they're different businesses. So ADR doesn't make, you know, uh, directory signs or signs that advertise multiple business to coordinate their logos or their color schemes. But they have very consistently made a point that if this is the sign in the style and the logo you have on your building sign, that sign should match the sign on your, on your, you know, um,
Right.
advertising sign. So it's signs that are related to similar businesses. They've pretty, they've been pretty consistent with saying they want the signs related to the businesses to match. And so if you look at the proposal, you know, there's the, the two signs advertising the same business are very different, um, in terms of style and, and character and all that. So, so that's what ADR was referring to. That's what they're recommending to be changed. Um, my understanding is the applicant does not want to change the sign and sort of, uh, you know, disputing ADR's recommendation.
Well, well, here, here's my concern. Um, you know, we don't have a building sign. We do not have a sign on the building anywhere. It's just a pole sign out front. Um, it, it's not changing anything. The upper sign says Empire Pools. The lower sign has, it says Empire Pools also with our phone number and our website. And then we have a reader board underneath that so that we can advertise, let people know what's going on. Like right now it says help wanted. Um, I, you know, I don't think we're changing anything there and there are no signs on the building. So, I mean, as far as compliance, as far as the square footage and everything, I think we're fine with that. Uh.
So let me ask you a question. Let me see if we can come to a good compromise here. So if I look at the sign as the submitted version, the, the scratched up one that I've got that says proposed, it's got Empire Pool or it's got Empire at the top. It's got pools and hot tubs with the, the swimming person at the top with a white field in the back. Down underneath it, it's got, uh, a blue field with pools and hot tub service and a phone number and then they, um, and then the, um, uh, website address underneath that in white. Would, would it be too much trouble to put all of that in a white field and then have blue letters for, uh, pools and hot tubs and service? And then, you know, a contrasting blue for the phone number and, and, and website and then the reader board underneath that? Can you zoom in on that a little bit, Sam?
Okay, I'm, I'm, are you, are you still talking about moving the sign up?
Yeah, if you can, if, if that, if, if that's submitted just as that is, I, I don't have a problem with that per se. I, I, you know, you don't have to match the fonts. You have to, you have to make them look like they're one big s- sign advertising one big, uh, one big property. That's what Heather's point was, whether it matches what's on the building or there's nothing on the building.
I would suggest the opposite though, Rich. These are illuminated signs. I would suggest that he made it all blue background with the white lettering, not all white background with blue lettering, because that's just going to be really glaring.
Well, this is where I have the problem. I mean, number one, um, I spent a lot of money to have these signs made. I know that's not your concern. Uh, number two, we're, we're just going through a pandemic. We just moved into a brand new building. We've spent thousands upon thousands of dollars to rehab this building. Um, and now at this point in time, you want us to change the whole color of, of everything there. Um, I mean, I, I'm willing to take the bottom sign that says pools, hot tubs and service and make it all white. I actually had my sign company show me what it would look like if we did that. Um, I, I don't have a problem with that. But if I, you make me change everything to blue, I, I don't think, I mean, we've had these logos for 25 years. Um, we've had the same, you know, the same signs in my Manchester office for 25 years. Nothing has changed with it. Manchester didn't have any problems. I know you guys are Concord, not Manchester. Um, I, it just, I, I think it's a burden on putting on us to put out more dollars and more money. Um, whereas it can be an easy fix to either move the sign up and leave everything the way it is, or if I change the bottom sign to an all white with blue lettering.
Okay, um, I see a hand up here. Teresa, are you hand up for this? You're on mute.
Yes, my hand up is, my, uh, can you hear me now?
Yep.
My hand's up. I have a question. I'm a little confused. These signs are already up.
No.
They're not up.
Oh, they are up?
Are they up? They, they are not up.
They are up. Yeah, no, they are up.
Yes, they are.
The signs are up.
The signs are up. Um, they've, they've been up for, well, originally before we ever moved in, we, we changed them and put the coming soon on there, on there. Um, and then we had to change the reader board because the reader board was non-functional anymore. All the pieces were broken off, so we had them, uh, fabricate a new reader board of the exact size and shape and, uh, install that for us.
So my second question is, this may be to you, Sam, is he grandfathered or not technically?
On the height?
Yeah, the height is the only grandfathered element.
So the height's the only thing that's grandfathered? So if I, if I understand this correctly, sir, and I'm not trying to be contrary, but this is something that's bothered me since I've been on the planning board. So you used a Manchester sign company, somebody supposedly looked at the ordinances for signs in Concord and you went ahead without approval from ADR or the planning board, uh, ordered, paid for and put up signs. Is that correct?
Uh, it is correct. We did not know that we needed to have permits to just change what the, 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 the writing on the signs. We didn't change the shape.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, keep going.
We didn't say, change the size of the signs or the shape of the signs.
Frame.
The frame or anything of that nature. We just changed the writing on the sign to go from Greenland's green sign to Empire Pool sign.
So you nor your sign company either called the city to ask what was expected or read carefully the regulations.
You are correct with that.
Thank you, thank you. And now, um, if I understand it correctly, we are, some people on this, this Zoom are not really thrilled about what's there and you don't want to change it because it means you've got to redo everything and spend the money all over again.
That's, that's part of it. I mean, if, if my sign was purple and orange, I'd be with you a hundred percent and say, yep, let's change it. Cause those are ugly. But I'm not putting anything up that's offensive, that's not colorfully tasteful. Um, you know, I'm just trying to run a business here. I've spent, like I said, a ton of money rehabbing that building. And yeah, I was wrong. I should have gotten permits. I didn't think of it. I didn't think it was necessary. Um, but now, now the city of Concord is putting a burden on me. I've been in the city of Concord for 28 years. Uh, as far as an established business. I've never had an issue or a run-in with anybody. Um, we're just trying to do what we do. And now I'm going to have to pay thousands of dollars to have this all changed. And, and that's where I have the issue.
Yeah, I respect that and I, like you, have run a business and, and I guess my, my only comment is that if there are rules and regulations, I think we, those who've made them would hopefully, um, assume and expect people who are in Concord to follow the rules and regulations.
Okay, well, I guess as a final, we're trying to find out. I guess it was recommended if we lift the reader board sign, they would be happy with that, to put it up above the larger sign. And I guess what I'm asking is if we redo that reader board, so it's blue writing on the white, would that be compliant? That's what we're trying to find out. So we can get on top of this and get it done the right way.
And, and I think that's a question that we need Architectural Design Review to weigh in on. Um, it's not something that I think we want to, you know, again, I'm, I'm saying it one way and then Architectural Design Review is going to look at it and say, we can't have all that white background because it's going to just be a beacon of light, um, you know, up in the top of Manchester Street. So, uh, let's, let's finish this up here. I just want to see if there's any other comments from the board or any questions from the board. If not, uh, I want to close the public hearing. I thank you for your testimony. Did we get both of your names? Um, Lisa, are we good? I don't know where Lisa is.
And I am here.
Okay.
Can they repeat them, please?
Yes.
Yeah, my, my name is Jeff Huberty, H U B E R T Y. And my business partner is Kevin Sotarian, S O T E R I O N. We're co, co-owners of Empire Pools.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll put you back in the audience here. Um, and we will close the public hearing. Heather? Could you put them back into the audience, please?
Yes. So for some reason, that's always a challenge for me. Okay, yeah.
Okay, and we will, uh, close the public hearing. Uh, any further discussion? Again, I, I will go back. We just about, um, voted on that. So we had a motion on the table to, uh, defer it back to ADR for additional comment. Would anybody like to recognize or change that? Or we've got a motion and a second on the table. Would anybody like to, uh, to change it or?
We have a hand raised in the attendees.
Uh, well, we've closed the public hearing now, so.
It's Carlos.
Okay, let's open the public hearing back up. And recognize, uh, Mr. Baia. Good evening, Carlos.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board. I, I understand. I apologize. I was not on the, on the meeting, but I understand there were some questions about the sign enforcement issue. And I, I can update the board if you'd like me to about that issue, again, without having the background of the global discussion you were having.
So, uh, with us, with regards to a specific issue or, uh, the globe, the issue that, uh, kind of you and I had talked about, just a global issue?
Yeah, the global issue is what I was.
Okay, can, can we have you hold tight for one sec? We got a motion and a second on the table and I want to get one, this, the, done for Empire Pools and then I want to come back to you. Um, so let's recognize that we've got a motion and a second on the table. No other attendees. I want to close the public hearing again. I think that's the second or third time, right? That must be a record. Uh, so.
Excuse me, Rich, can you just clarify the second confirm?
I think David, David Fox seconded that. Is that right, David?
That's what I saw. Okay, great, thank you.
So we got a motion and a second. Will all those in favor by roll call? And again, just for clarification, we're recommending that it be sent back to ADR for further review and then we'll get that back for, for approval, uh, once they do that. So, uh, all those in favor by roll call? Heather?
Cameron Woodford?
Aye.
Councillor Champlin?
Aye.
Uh, Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Uh, Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
I'm gonna start repeating people now. Did I get everybody? I think that's it.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll move on here and recognize, uh, Carlos Baia, uh, from the city. If we could, uh, uh, again, conversations regarding signs are top of mind right now. So, uh, uh, Carlos, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, uh, so the city, we, we've had this conversation several months ago. Actually, I was on with some of the code administration staff and we, we heard your concerns regarding some of the sign enforcement challenges you've been having. Uh, we actually had a meeting, uh, last week, um, Mr. Woodford and myself, we, we had a meeting, we discussed this. And so what we're, what we've done is we have drafted an amendment to our sign ordinance, particularly where it deals with fees. And because today if someone does install a sign, and I understand some of the major concern, and correct me if I'm wrong, is uh, people installing signs without benefit of permit. So they install the signs prior to the planning board having had a chance to review, puts you in an awkward position as well. It's not, not anything that we want to happen. So what we are, what we're proposing is that the, there was already a provision in the, in sign fee ordinance that there's a double, a doubling of the sign fee for a sign that's put in without benefit of permit when they have to be formalized after. Uh, we feel that that's not enough. It obviously has not proven to be a disincentive to this kind of behavior. So we are going to be proposing an additional daily fee on top of the doubling of the fee. So if someone puts up a sign without a permit, uh, we are currently proposing, I think it's $25 a day in a fee that will be assessed, uh, onto that permit. So that'll be on top of the doubling of the fee. So, uh, that will add up very, very quickly. And we anticipate that that would be a step to change that behavior. Now this says, it's, it's an ordinance change, so right now we've drafted internally, it has to go to the city council. I'm hoping to get it on for a first reading at the May council meeting for, and for a public hearing in June. So that would be my hope. Um, but we have not had any conversations with, uh, anyone on the council about this issue. I appreciate the fact that Councillor Pierce and Champlin are on the call, um, because it's, it's going to be important that they, they, uh, if this is something that they, they value and they want to pursue, that they speak to it also during that, that public hearing.
So again, I, and I, I thank you, Carlos. It was a, it was a great meeting, a good conversation. And again, I think Suzanne, you might have mentioned it's been 12 years and, and I'll, I'll take it as a fact that it hasn't been quite that long for me, but it does, uh, you know, sometimes things do move slowly, but they do move in the right direction and, and uh, we had a great conversation about it. We're seeing it more and more. It's not, um, something that is going down. Uh, code seems to be picking it up as well, which is great. We do have a couple of items on our agenda for tonight, which our uh, code enforcement went out and said, you got signs up here that haven't been approved and get in, you gotta get in line, which is, which is great. So, um, we, we did have a nice conversation too about the, um, uh, the, the app. Uh, and I want to kind of just tell you that, that the, the app, the click, what is it? Click Fix? See Click Fix?
Yep, See Click Fix.
See Click Fix. So we've seen it, uh, promoted by this, the, the, the city manager and, uh, in a recent, uh, uh, thing that he was on. Uh, I actually downloaded the app and, and Carlos and I talked about it. There is a code mechanism in there. So if there are signs that you, you know, haven't gone through Architectural Design Review or haven't been approved by the planning board, because we see every one of them. If you see a sign, click on the app, use it and, and basically report it into the city that says, hey, this, this is a sign that's up. Um, and I encourage all of the sign companies out there that, that keep your padres in order. Uh, if you see a sign that's out of compliance, to, to tell somebody. So personally, I downloaded the app and didn't, I'm not out there looking for signs, but I saw a woman trip on Main Street, uh, with a, uh, one of the cobblestones was raised up from the winter. Um, I submitted it through the app with a picture and it pinned the location automatically, put a pin in the location. Uh, it submits to the city. It popped back and told me they got it. Uh, the city popped back about 20 minutes later, said they'd received it and assigned it to Chris S. in the downtown, uh, in the downtown corridor group. Uh, I got a response from Chris S. about 30 minutes later. And then another one saying he'd found actually three or four tiles there that were, that were all kind of upset. He put two cones out for the night and then sent me another note back the next morning. Again, all through the app. He doesn't know who I am. I'm not anybody important. I'm just somebody reporting it on the, on the app. And he responded that all of them had been fixed. I walked out there tonight on my way out of the office and all nice and smooth and back to normal. So if you see something, say something, click it and, and, and the city will respond. And the nice fact is they, there's a record of it and somebody's going to respond and you're going to see that who's responsible for it and how they're doing it. So if you see signs that are out of whack, um, say something and do it. David?
Uh, just a quick question. And I don't know if Carlos may be the one to answer it is that when a, that per, that person from, uh, Empire Pools, his defense seemed to be the ignorance of, of the process. What would?
What would if he he's been in the town for, he said, 28 years? What triggers the fact that he should have ignorance is not a defense for breaking the law? So what would have triggered him to comply or not comply? Just the fact that he didn't read something or his sign company came from Manchester? Is there a trigger that's built in that he would have to? He would have to comply with when he fills out a form? Where where does that come from?
So if I could?
Yes, please.
So I find it, and again, I'm not really sure about the Empire Sign case, because I wasn't even on the call when that came up, so I'm just going to speak generally. It it in terms of somebody has a sign that's put up and they argue that and put up professionally and they argue that, oh, they didn't know. I'll be candid, I find it hard to believe because there are sign regulations probably in every city in Hampshire. If there aren't, I'd be shocked. Now, some of the towns probably may not have some of these, but the cities almost certainly do. And professional sign installers should know that. And the question should be asked before they put up the sign, they should be checking in with the local code administration or whatever office it is in the particular municipality to check in to see, is there a permit needed? And so that would be the behavior that I would expect. Now, if someone's putting up a sign and they printed it themselves in their own workshop and they totally are ignorant of that, that would seem, you know, potentially believable. But, you know, those are probably the rare instances. I think the more normal instances, somebody's doing it and they probably know what they're doing and they just are trying to expedite or undercut or whatever it might be the process, but the the sign regulations are in our ordinance. Our ordinance is available online, so if somebody comes in, they can get to the ordinance, they can type in signs and it pulls up all the all the different sign regulations. So and if they're professionals, they should probably know that very, very easily and find those regulations pretty quickly.
So you're telling me that you believe that 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 ordinance is clear and it's you know, the the burden falls on them to be able to read through the process and come to the same conclusion that you would come to.
So so first of all, we say that any ordinance, you know, to say that there's a clear ordinance that, you know, that's a stretch. We've all seen the ordinance as regulations, so I'm never going to sit here and say that every single ordinance is clear. What I think in a community our size particularly is that if someone has a question about, for example, a sign, whether they need a sign permit, all they have to do is reach out to the staff here at City Hall and we'll get them to the right people. That's we we're not a large organization, so we can find the right person pretty quickly and get them the answer that they need. So it it again, there's really little reason, I think, that these situations should be occurring in most instances. Now, again, there might be exceptions where somebody is just a weird, unique situation. But I think we can try and address most situations in a regularly regular process.
Thank you, thank you.
Hang on, I got a couple more questions for you, Carlos, but I did have a question regarding, say, people that put up signs themselves, don't use a sign company. And I'm thinking of one in particular, and I I know where it is and I think you do as well, that decided that they're going to put a new sign, they're going to move into this location, they're going to put a sign up. Is there any mechanism in place with the ordinance to require them to either cover it up or take it down? Or is it just the twenty five dollars per day, which is significant, twenty five dollars a day if you got it up for two months? And is it retroactive back or is it once you notify them, it starts the clock ticking as far as twenty five dollars?
Sure. So let me just be clear, the twenty five dollars has not been adopted yet. That's something we're proposing. So so if it goes into place, what I would imagine would happen, it would be from the time we notice it. So we get formal notice of the of the signs up, so that date, that's when the clock starts to tick. And and it'll be twenty five dollars a day. Now, they can remove the sign and avoid that twenty five dollar penalty, which is probably in their best interest to have it taken down. Or, you know, if they want to keep incurring that twenty five dollars, twenty five dollars every day until you get the planning board, that's going to be a that's going to cost more than the sign. By the time by the time you get there. So that's why we're hoping that it serves as a as a deterrent to people so that we can get rid of this behavior. We would also, what we'd like to do is tie in if the city, if you were amenable to this, also this evening, if you could give us your support for this concept, that would help us. I could include that in the report to council. But we'd also want to make sure that we we include a campaign is a strong term, but just basically sending out correspondence to the major sign installers in the region to let them know this is this has happened and here's 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 what it entails. And so that they're put on notice and they can't argue later that, oh, we didn't know all this stuff. No, they're going to be noticed before we start to assess that fee. So that everyone's clear, this is the new sort of way of doing business in Concord. Now, there will be, I'm sure there will be instances where, you know, we're going to have to kind of figure out there's some gray area, but right now, I think, based on all the the consternation that's out there, we have to kind of take this tack.
Yeah, I'm okay with figuring out gray area. That's that's the least of my worries. Heather, I saw your hand up and I got Byron as well, so you're on mute. You're on mute.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out with regard to I think it was John's question, that oftentimes people think that the zoning code is the only thing they need to comply with in terms of, like, the gentleman that we just had on. You know, he was under the impression that since he met the since he worked with code to bring the sign into code compliance and didn't need a variance, that he was good to go. And he didn't realize that he had to go through or he didn't understand the process of having to go through Architectural Design Review. So I'm sure if we ask code staff, they'll say they've told them 17 different ways, but I think that is often an issue where, you know, he started out being told he needed a variance and then was told, okay, you made this change. Now you don't need a variance and got this assumption that he was okay and didn't need to do anything else. So that's just another another component of it, that we have a design review process in Concord. And not not many communities do have that. So I think that, you know, somehow just really hammering the design review process home so that people can't say, oh, I didn't realize I had to go to design review. He kept saying, he kept saying, it's I replace it kind, I replace it kind, but it was entirely different sign. It's a completely different sign. So he was not understanding that just because it was the same size and shape of the previous sign, that is not that is not needing the requirement.
Okay, Byron?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Carlos, if City Council does approve this change in the ordinance, would you make sure you that you add to the list of major sign companies in the region? A and M Signs down in Manchester. I'm not sure whether they're going to qualify as a major sign company, but I would certainly like to make sure that they understand the 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 sign ordinances and the codes here in Concord.
Sure, we can do that, Counselor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Matt Hicks?
Yeah, I just think, you know, listening to this, and we've been through this before, the sign companies seem to be more of the problem. I mean, you I hire I would hire a sign company because I don't know, right? It's their job to do this work. So for the Empire Group, I would go right back to the sign company and say, you should have, we hired you to do this. Like, this is your job, this is your profession, and I go back at them for any of those costs. And if they keep if these sign companies continue to either be negligent, if you will, just ignore what our regulations are, then they're going to be out of business. So the the sign companies are going to have to comply or they're not going to get hired and then they're out of business. So I I think, hopefully, that's the way it works, because there's no excuse for these sign companies. They just don't want to, they probably just don't want to do it. It's time, right? So I think it's a good thing.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
I agree. I agree with Matthew.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just the one question, Carlos, of clarification. You said the fine is going to start from the time you notice the violation? If you have trouble tracking down the owner and whatnot, could there be a four to five to seven day period where the owner doesn't even know that they're being fined? And I'm just.
Sure. May I?
Yes, certainly. Thank you.
So 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 Jeff, I think the first of all, I don't want to call it a fine and or a violation, because that puts us into a different segment of of land use law that creates, it's much more bureaucratic and will not get the results we're looking for. We're calling this a fee. This is a fee because it's just a fee for service. If you put the sign out there, now permit, it's a fee, it's going to be added to your permit fee. And there might be instances where that in fact does happen, where somebody puts up a sign and maybe it takes a little bit of time to contract it now. But the reality is it's it's happening. So the sign's already up. So to me, again, not being the city solicitor and just saying, you know, this is my perspective, it's kind of irrelevant. It's the date that we noticed it. So that's, you know, that's we saw it there on this day. It doesn't have a permit and it needs to have a permit, so it's going to be, you know, that's that's what's going to be assessed on that particular sign.
I appreciate that. I just want clarification, make sure I did hear you right. I'm in agreement. To me, they're getting the benefit of the sign being up there. So I I agree with you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great, Carlos, thank you very much for your for coming in, popping in at the the most opportune time. So it was perfect timing. So thank you very much.
Sure, Mr. Chair.
What can we do? Can we give you a can we give you a verbal if I if I poll the group? Can I can I? Can you give me some idea of what you'd like us to say to say? I mean, is it just a verbal communication back?
Sure. I mean, I I think what I'd like to include in the report is that there was, you know, consensus or some sort of direction from the board that was supportive of what we're trying to accomplish. That would be helpful.
So if if we can poll the group and if we'll take a roll call vote, Heather, all of those in favor of of what of what Mr. Baia has outlined here regarding a fee to be assessed for non-compliance of signs, if you could just give a vote, that would be great.
Do you want a motion?
Do we need a motion? I'll take a motion from someone.
Well, I think a motion would be helpful.
I think that would be more formal and and would be more impressive to the city council. I'll make the motion. I'll I'll move that we endorse the proposed fee for non-compliance signs.
Well put and seconded by David Fox. So all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodford?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Great. Okay, there you go, Carlos.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Good night. Thank you.
Rich?
Yes.
One real quick question, because getting into that time of year, where does the sandwich board stuff signage fall in the great scheme of things?
Still with, I believe, a permit, if I'm not mistaken, Heather, is that right? So someone on a new a new restaurant on Main Street wants to put a sandwich board up, there's a permitting process that they need to go through to do that, right?
Well, they need to they need to fill out an application and get it approved and make sure, you know, yes, so yes.
Are are the guidelines similar?
When you mean guidelines?
In terms of placement, size, you know, the the various qualifications to be compliant.
Yes.
Yeah, they're similar, but they're not going to dictate the the look and feel of the sign as much as permitted side would, because most of them are going to have scribbling on them or some of them are chalk words and it's more the placement and the size than anything. Good question, though, David. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is 7C. The Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 613, requests ADR approval for the installation of an awning at 36 South Main Street in the Central Business Performance CB CBP District. If the applicant's here, you can make yourself known. And we've got an application, and again, Architectural Design Review weighing in regarding the 1979 picture that they included in the in the application and the the fact that it's a different front entrance. There's windows on the picture, but there's really a door there. And I think we're looking for a little bit more of a representative view. So if anyone from the the Eagles is here and has a representative view that we could look at, if you can make yourself known. If not, we will move on.
Rich, I don't believe the applicant is here. However, I did receive communication and new materials this morning, and I can share that with you. In response to ADR's comments seeking more clarification. So this is a rendering with a more updated photo. You can see that this is a door. Here is the awning superimposed over the rendering. The applicant has also provided information that the the awning will project nine and six inches out from the wall, which is approximately half the distance or half the the length of the depth. And there'll be an overall 60 inch drop from the top of the awning down to the bottom of the awning with about 90 inch clearance at the front of the awning.
Okay, and I think that that meets with what Architectural Design Review was looking for. I don't think they had a problem with it. I have aesthetically, it looks very nice. I don't have a problem with what they're looking at. But they just wanted to see a little bit more detail. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So let's open the public hearing and see if there's any questions from the board or any member of the audience that wishes to address this. I don't see an audience member. As soon as I say we'll close the public hearing, someone will put their hand up. So I'm going to say we'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that as submitted?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Suzanne, seconded by John Regan. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodford?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, that moves us to item 7D. If we could read that into the record, Heather, while I look up some notes here.
Barlow Signs, on behalf of Northway Bank, request ADR approval for the replacement of two externally illuminated wall signs and the installation of a new non-anonated wall sign at 190 North Main Street in the urban commercial district. My understanding is that ADR recommended approval of some of some of the request, but not the entirety of the request. Sam can probably give an update if he'd like.
Yeah, it would be great. Sam, if you could.
Sure, I will share the screen and I do believe that we have a representative from Barlow Signs with us. Yes, Brandon has raised his hand. I'll give a quick overview of what ADR commented, and then I'll let Brandon take over. Basically, ADR recommended a partial approval of what was submitted. So the sign package consists of these two building signs. One of the comments was to justify the signage with the shutters, as they have done. This is one of the signs that ADR did not recommend approval. They thought that this was not in touch with the character of the building. In addition, they did not approve or did not recommend approval of this sign. It seems like an odd sign. It seems like more of something that would be inside the entryway of a bank. However, the applicant stated that this sign mounting is actually installed into the railing and was existing before Northway Bank took over the building. Other than that, ADR was fine with the directional signs. The one comment that we had from ADR was that this sign, you know, please use other door. Shouldn't be mounted on the door, should be mounted before you climb up the stairs and then you get to the door, realize that you made a mistake and you actually go do another door. And they were very much in favor of this monument sign, where this monument sign could take the place of the building signs. However, this monument sign does need a variance. And that is how they left it. So their their overall recommendation was to approve signs F through I and not to approve signs B or E, B and E being the building sign and this sign.
What does that say on it, Sam?
It's like a mission statement.
It's like a mission statement?
Yeah.
Okay, yikes. And go back to the picture on the side of the wall, because the the first image right there. Okay, so there's two images, there's two Northway Bank signs, is that right? Or is they only proposing one?
There are two. So this is the kind of the front of the facade where the that monument sign would be right here, right on the side.
So I'm going to guess ADR hated both of those.
More or less.
Whether they would justify it or not. Okay. All right, why don't you keep sharing your screen? We'll recognize that, oh, no. Well, we'll come back to it if we need it. That's fine, Sam. Let's recognize the person from North from Northway Bank or from the sign company, if we could.
Do we want to open the public hearing?
Yes, please. We'll open the public hearing.
Promoting, I don't know who this is, I'm promoting the panelists. So you are now, there you go. Thanks.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon from Barlow Signs, representing Northway Bank located located at 190 North Main Street. Thank you, Sam, for covering that. I have a little bit of an overview here as well that I will read through quickly to not take up any more of everybody's precious time tonight. So I'm here in front of you guys, seeking approval for the proposed sign package. um, to not take up any more of everybody's precious time tonight. Uh, so I'm here in front of you guys, uh, seeking approval, um, for the proposed sign package. Uh, after meeting with the Architectural Design Review, uh, committee, uh, we have worked, um, out items F through I, as Sam has noted. Uh, for items B, uh, in good faith, uh, we have reduced the overall square footage comments from the committee. Uh, we feel that the new proposed, proposed sign is respectful, uh, to the members', uh, feelings and comments, uh, while also fitting within the available space better, uh, without being overwhelming to the exterior walls. Uh, for item E, um, as Sam mentioned, that is already built in. It was existing. Uh, we'll be replacing, uh, just the face, uh, with a digital print. Um, and that will just be, um, uh, like it presented there with their mission statement. Uh, it's meant to be read from the parking lot. Uh, you're not gonna be seeing it from the road. Uh, it's for when their, uh, their customers are walking up to the doors, they're able to see that, that statement. Uh, and continue to be great customers for them. Um, and then in conclusion, um, as mentioned before, um, all of these signs have passed zoning, uh, ordinances. Um, sort of seeking your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. And I'm, I'm gonna assume you just heard our conversation about the signs and how you've done everything right, right? So you're, you're in perfect compliance. So thank you very much. We're gonna start, we're gonna start recognizing when people do it the right way. That doesn't, that doesn't mean you're gonna get anything approved, but per se, but at, at least we recognize that you, you did it. Um, I just wanna talk a little bit about the two, the two signs on the front, Sam. So can you bring those back up? Um, and Brandon, I guess the, the issue is the monument sign is a brand-new sign that would require a variance that you should, that, that
So I, I can speak to the monument sign, um. Oops, I'm sorry.
Good, now that Sam teased us with the, with the, with the, uh, with this monument sign, that would require a variance. I, I, and just, I mean, from an aesthetic look and from a a, a downtown look, that, that's a great look. I, I think that's a, a, an excellent, you know, professional look. Uh, go back to the, the, the first one, Sam, if you can. So I just think that you, even if it, you know, with, it just looks like it's tacked up on the wall. It doesn't look like a sign at all, but if you can, you can tell us a little bit more about the, the logic here.
Okay.
Is there an existing sign there? Sorry, is there an existing sign there?
Um, where item B is? No, there's not.
Okay.
Um, to speak on the monument sign, um, real quick, um, the reason why that sign wasn't included, as you mentioned, it was for a variance, um, but everything, um, is in compliance for the lighting height, uh, size. And the only thing that we're getting a variance for is the setback. Um, so, uh, in regards to item B, um, the previous, um, business that was in there, um, had a monument sign that was actually, uh, much larger than what we proposed. Um, so we wanted to provide a package that, uh, was respectful, uh, to passerbyers as well as the building. That's why we decided to go with a smaller, uh, monument sign, and then we wanted to add in, uh, the Northway Bank, uh, that was up presented on the wall. Um, so these letters are actually halo illuminated. Um, it looks like the, um, the previous drawing that we had submitted had that rendering that showed that visually. Doesn't look like it made it over to this one, so I do apologize about that. Um, but these, these, um, are, are, are meant to identify, uh, each one of the entrances as well, uh, and provide motorists, uh, another means of identification, uh, for accessing, uh, accessing the bank.
Okay, um, thank you, Sam. We, I think we're done with the screen. That's great. Um, I got a hand up here, Suzanne.
Yeah, I think, um, in a building like this, it's a, it used to be a residence and it wasn't commercial. And so I think that's why the signage on it, um, doesn't really work very well. And I, I think the monument sign is way more visible on the streetscape. And would, you know, I, I mean, I think of all the banks I go to, you know where they are. And so I think you can have too much signage, and I think the monument sign and enter here is, um, enough. And I always feel bad when we have these, these older buildings that weren't ever meant to be a bank to have, um, signs tacked onto them in this way.
Thank you, Suzanne. Byron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Suzanne articulated some of my, uh, comments. Uh, Brandon, do you, what was this? Is this the former? I hate to speak the name of a company, competing bank. Was this the former, uh, Merrimack County Savings Bank Business Center?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, okay, all right. And, uh, cause I, and I thought I had remembered that they had a monument sign, which worked very effectively, I thought. So yeah, I, I, I agree with what Suzanne just articulated, which is, you know, this is a, it was one of the historic residences that used to line this, uh, street. Uh, along with stately elm trees, which alas are, are al- also got mostly gone or gone. Uh, but, uh, for that reason, I mean, I think the sign treat, uh, the sign treatment in, um, in option B would be appropriate for an, uh, for a commercial building, you know, a, a, a purpose-built commercial building. I think it would be lovely. In fact, and very effective, but for a historic structure like this, uh, which was at one time a residence, I, I just don't think it really works as well as I think the monument sign will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just for clarification, Brandon, was, uh, the, the, the pile of the, uh, the monument sign removed from the prior residence? Is that gone?
Um, I believe that the sign face itself has been removed, but the poles are still, uh, in place.
Okay, so you're gonna use that same monument or a different monument?
Yes, it's going to be in that same location.
So the variance, what do, what do you need a variance for? There's already an existing sign there.
It's just setback, is what we were told.
Okay. Okay, um, any other member of the board have any questions from this applicant? See, we got a hand up in the audience, Heather, if you could, uh, recognize that, and we'll open it up to public testimony.
Sure, do you want me to, um, put Brandon back in?
Now leave him there, in case we have a question.
Okay, Brandon, can we get your last name for the record?
Uh, yes, Courier. See?
Courier, thank you. Um, so Claude, I am promoting you to panelist. And you're up on our screen now.
Hey Claude, if you could just, uh, state your name for the record?
Claude Gentil, G E N T I L, I J O M M E. Um, just wanted to emphasize, yeah, none of, I, I think it's fair to say, and I know a couple of you were at the ADR meeting, that, uh, none of us on the board cared for the signs on the side of the building. The standard that we all know about, if you drive through Concord, any residences that have been turned into a business normally has a sign up on. Monument sign is more attractive. And a side note, when you're driving north on Main Street, you can't see the sign on the side of the building until you're in front of the res- of the building just before it. So it, it seems like it would be unnecessary.
Okay, any, uh, any questions of Claude before he goes? I've been saying your name wrong for years, and I apologize. So that's why I made you say it here in the meeting. Thank you very much.
You obviously didn't study French for three years.
True, that is true. Thank you, Claude. So we will, uh, let you go, and, uh, any other questions from Brandon regarding that testimony from the board? Okay, well.
I just, oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Just to clarify, the existing sign that was out there was two granite posts. And you wouldn't be reusing those posts for your pylon sign? You would be completely removing them and putting a new pylon sign?
We would be putting in a new, uh, base because, uh, the way that this sign, uh, is going to be fabricated, uh, we won't be able to utilize, uh, two poles like that. We would just have to utilize one.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, that's why they need to get the variance, because it's, they're replacing it.
Yeah, but it's, it's an easier, it's an easier variance if they're just saying, hey, we're, we're digging up this sign that's there and we'll put it in. So the, the, I think it's a, I think it's an easy variance, especially if you, if you go and show them those ugly pictures of the, of the, of the, of the side of the building. Sorry, Brandon, I'm sorry, but, uh, uh, thank you, Jeff. Any other questions from the board? Showing my color here, sorry. Um, okay, so we will let Brandon go as well, Heather. Thank you very much, Brandon, for your testimony. Uh, we will close the public hearing on this, and would anyone like to make a motion? I'm gonna make a motion that, um, we, well, how do I wanna do this? Cause, um, their ADR recommendations were different. Um, to amend the motion to recommend approving signs F through I and not approve signs B or E and encourage the applicant to move forward to the mo- monument sign. So is that appropriate, Sam, or Heather, if I make a motion to approve signs F through I, uh, not approve signs B or E and, uh, encourage that the applicant go ahead and get the monument sign in process?
Can I jump in?
Yep.
Was the monument sign an alternative to the signs on the building? Or were they proposing all of them?
Yeah, no, B and E, B and E were were what they had, and then the monument sign is an alternative to B and E. I, I'm pretty sure, right, Sam?
I don't believe so. I think that A is in addition to B and E.
Oh, so B and E on the side of the building and a monument sign? Yeah.
Yes.
So that's, I, I'm gonna say that my motion is gonna be to approve E through I, which are those small
Nope, nope. F through I, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, is it F?
F.
F through I. Not approve, oh, wait a minute, I'm looking at the wrong one. F through I, I was looking at the wrong line here. F through I, not approve B or E. Um, which are the signs on the side of the building. Um, and then encourage the monument sign as a replacement for B and E. Is that right?
Can I, can I jump in?
Yep.
Are, are we giving them direction on the two that you're not recommending approval? Or what are? I'm not sure of the authorization for ADR to deny signs that are, that comply with the zoning ordinance. So
Yeah, we've been down that road before, haven't we?
Yeah, well, I mean, in terms of the amount of signage that's allowed on the building.
Yep.
If they're allowed per the code, and you're, we're not telling them right now, we don't like the design of your sign, go back and redesign it. Or we have X, Y, Z alternatives that we want you to pursue. We're telling them, we don't want you to have these signs, any signs on a building. It's not clear to me that, that you're authorized to do that.
I think we are.
I think the visual appearance of it is something that we can deny, if I'm not mistaken. I know we had the conversation regarding the Antiques Gallery with not liking the sign or the location of the sign, but not particularly the content. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think we can deny for content. I could be wrong, but Carlos, go. You got, uh,
Carlos does not necessarily know the answer to this, but, um, I would re- I, I think your motion is fine, but, um, I would maybe recommend that we uh, consult with legal about denying versus
Yep.
Um, asking them to continue to the next meeting.
Is, is it possible to deny the application and have it revised instead of picking and choosing?
I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding your question.
Well, no, like, instead of saying we accept, you know, A, B, C, but not F and G, just say that as presented, the application is not sufficient, or we don't think it's appropriate. I, I, I do think the planning
I don't think it matters either way. I, I think it would be helpful if you had some direction, if you, if you said, you know, please pursue other sign options for these locations.
Well, I, I would say that the, the, I mean, I, it's funny, I kind of thought that was Merrimack County Savings Bank, but I never looked at it that closely, um, even though I went there all the time. But, um, I, I would say that the signage on the building as presented is not appropriate. And that the monument sign and the other signs are whatever. I don't even know if anyone goes through the front door, which kind of makes me wonder why they had the mission statement at the front door. Is that open or is that the one?
No, they didn't.
No, it was on the side door, Suzanne. It was on the, it's on the
Oh, on the parking lot side?
On the parking lot side. Yeah, I think that used to be a wayfinding, uh, sign that directed people going to
To that door, to that door, yeah.
To, to different, to different, uh, parts of the building or something.
So I guess I, I'm not in favor of the signs on the building at all.
Okay, Suzanne.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to table this? I'll make a motion to table it if you wish.
I think it would be appropriate to approve the ones that ADR was fine with and ask them to go back to ADR to pursue other sign options for those locations. Because then we're asking them to think about it again, and we're not telling them you're not allowed to put signs on your, on your building. Um, I, I just don't know if you, if that, that kind of makes me uncomfortable. I'm not sure that that's something that, that you're allowed to do. Um, I guess they, you could tell them, we don't want them on the building, we want three monument signs, you know? And then you're not making it seem as though you're denying them signage that they're permitted per code. Does that make sense?
I kind of understood that's what he said, though. He said, don't do these two on the sign, but pursue the monument sign. So he was kind of doing the option of
Right, but they weren't proposing the monument in alternative. They, they also wanted the monument.
And they, and they would still
They want something on those facades where they're allowed to have them on the sides of the building. I'm just, uh, I think we need to ask them to, you know, basically look at other options.
Well, maybe ADR can have them locate them in a way that they're not so offensive to the architecture. They just look like they're thrown on there, and it, I mean, it doesn't look like a bank. So
There's no signs up there now, right?
No.
No. But by, by right, they have the ability, because they got X amount of frontage, that they can have those signs on the sides of the building.
Is, is it inappropriate to express a, a preference?
No, not at all.
Then I would suggest that we, we, we establish a preference and, and move it in that direction.
So let's try to move it along here. So if we say, are we all in agreement that, uh, signs F through I are appropriate and we can approve those, and then maybe, um, recommend that, uh, I don't know, further review? How do you wanna word it, Heather? I mean, is it?
We'd just say pursue other, other options that are compatible with architecture of the building.
Yeah, so, 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 uh, uh, I'll make a motion to approve F through I, uh, not approve signs B through E as submitted, uh, and encourage them to find an alternative, uh, that's architecturally pleasing for the district. How's that?
Sounds good. Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodford?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Okay, so that's done. So let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item seven E. If you could read that into the record, Madam Clerk.
Will Cox and Barton requesting our approval for the renovation of the building at Ten Pleasant Street in the Central Business Performance District. So this is the building permit in Performance District aspect of it. It's the same project we talked about earlier, but this is a building permit in Performance District. And Sam can give you an update on that.
My screen, my screen is frozen.
Uh, we can hear you, David. Can you hear us? We can
Now I can, now I can.
All right, we can hear you. Go ahead, Sam.
Great, and I believe we have, uh, Erin Lambert with us tonight, and she will be able to speak on this. Uh, but this, uh, came before ADR, um, this month as well as last month, um, to clarify some of the design items and the, uh, drawings of the fenestration on the building, and also how the building would be cleaned up. Um, originally, they had proposed pressure washing, but given its historical significance, it was advised, uh, to avoid pressure washing, uh, the brick facades. Um, basically, it is, uh, the, the meat of the project are, is an internal renovation. However, um, as I said, the windows, uh, will be, uh, touched up and, and replaced. Um, there are a number of panels, uh, here that are being installed. This is the existing door right now. Um, this will now be a window, and the new door will be here. The reason being is the, uh, Pleasant Street Extension Sidewalk slopes down towards Store Street in this direction, and by doing some slight grade changes here, uh, this will now be an accessible, uh, entrance. Um, here are the, uh, holding places for the, the signs, uh, and also there's an awning, uh, proposed here. ADR did have some comments on the awning, wanting to clarify, um, mounting drainage and lighting. Um, with that, I will, uh, I'll turn it over to Erin.
Great, welcome, uh, to the table, Erin. If you could state your name for the record, as soon as we
I, I haven't promoted, I haven't promoted her yet. Uh, are, are, do we open the public hearing? I, I haven't promoted, I haven't promoted her yet. Uh, are, are, do we open the public hearing? Sorry, keep talking on it. Erin, uh, I'm not sure if she can hear me. I just promoted you to panelists, so you can use video and audio.
Perfect. Good evening, thank you very much for having us. Um, Heather, do you see Dennis Myers in the audience as well?
Uh, I'll look through it while you're Um, I don't see, unless he's got it, can you raise your hand, Dennis, if you're here? You don't see your name. Uh, yeah, oh, there he is, his Oh, I promoted the wrong person. Sometimes it bounces around and then
Nope, still the wrong person.
What the heck? Okay, I am on his name, I'm promoting.
Chris is probably joining us, but for an application, a few more on the agenda.
Trying to send him back. Did we get them? Yes, guys, enough is out there.
Perfect, okay.
If I can take Chris off.
I'm trying.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you so much for having us. We're very excited to be renovating this building and establishing, um, a permanent location for Will Cox and Barton in the downtown. Um, so Sam, would you mind showing the, the elevation again? That might be the best slide for us to speak to. Um, we did go to Architectural Design Review again, and, and a couple of their questions, we've been able to answer. Um, most of them were related to, um, the canopy. It will have lighting below the canopy. Um, there will be drainage in the canopy in the form of a scupper, and we will incorporate a downspout. Um, and certainly, um, we are looking at the relationship between the new racket for the sign and how that will interact with the canopy. Um, and I can let Dennis speak to that a little bit more. Um, but yes, from a site perspective, all that we're really changing, um, as Sam mentioned, is that we're trying to make our main entrance accessible. Unfortunately, uh, by doing some regrading in the alley, we're able to do that. Um, there is an existing catch basin, um, that we will raise the grade of and make some grading changes there. I did meet, uh, Gary Lemay out on site a few weeks ago. He had a couple of questions as to how we're making that grading work, um, and I think seeing it in person helped him understand what we're planning to do out there. So, um, we have looked at that. Uh, we do need to clean out that catch basin and, and make sure we know where it's going, and so Gary and I coordinated that some of that will be done when we break ground and begin construction. Um, what this does mean, though, is that we're closing the door, which is currently on Store Street, and it will now be a door that's fixed. Um, one of the questions that Architectural Design Review had for us is whether or not we could change that to, um, an infill panel on the bottom, so that it was clear to somebody walking by that that wasn't a door. Um, we are pursuing historical tax credits and working with, um, a consultant to file that application. Um, we, we do have a concern that changing that will change the historic characteristics from the Store Street side, so um, we don't know that we'll be able to do that. We were certainly asking, but, um, at this time, we believe that that won't be permitted um, because it would change the historical characteristics of that facade. Um, so, and also, uh, so our architect is Dennis Myers, he's on the line, um, and available to answer any questions you might have architecturally, because that is not my ear.
So Erin, can you just orient me on that bottom right-hand picture, so that the awning is gonna be hanging over on the Pleasant Street Extension side, and the Store Street side is the long side here, right?
Um, actually, the awning is hanging over the alley.
The alley, I got you.
Yeah, so the blade sign extends out over the sidewalk, and if you were to walk in the building today, you would have to go through the door that's below the sign, so that
The door is, is right there in that corner, right?
Exactly.
Okay, and the, the left-hand side is the, the picture in the bottom left-hand corner?
That is, if you, if you had your back to the parking garage, that would be the north elevation, so it's, it's hidden from view um, for most folks. Um, that, those are the egress doors that are required in order for us to have access from the second floor and also to the lower level.
In that little back alley between the garage, right?
Exactly.
Okay, great. Okay, um, any questions from the board?
I have one.
Suzanne, yep.
Um, so the building now is painted, correct?
No.
It's not painted?
No.
Oh, it's all, it, okay.
It's above colored brick.
Okay, sorry, and then my question is, is the, are the, um, finishes of the windows changing?
The windows are changing, but they're going to be, uh, replica of the form and structure they are today, and they're going to be a similar color to what they are today, which is relatively close to the masonry color.
So like, I'm talking about like the actual structure of the window? The actual, like, where the panes are?
Yes, that's, that's gonna be, uh, much like the color it is today, so it's not a high contrast with the brick.
Just wondering, because sometimes, like, I've noticed some of the buildings, they're bronze and they've been changed to white down in, um, some of the renovations. So I just wanted to know if it was gonna change.
No, the historic recommendation is to keep the color much like it is today, where it's relatively close to the masonry color.
Great, thank you.
What'd you, what'd you call the masonry color? Buff brick?
Yeah, it's, uh, sort of yellowish.
Oh, well, that's, see, I thought it was painted, but it's a yellowish brick.
Yeah, right.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, there was an Architectural Designer View comment regarding power washing. How are you gonna clean the building without power washing?
We gotta
We're gonna do it with, uh, you know, do it by hand.
Okay.
With, uh, recommended chemicals, uh, not chemicals, but so much as a solution that is approved by the, uh, Secretary of the Interior Standards. And we've done that on other masonry buildings, and that's what we're planning to do here.
Okay. Uh, Byron, questions?
I did, but Dennis just answered it. I was going to ask if this was going, if this work was being done according to Secretary of the Interior Standards, based on Erin's comments, but Dennis just answered that, so thank you.
Look at that. Okay, um, any other questions from the board?
I just have one. I was looking at the, uh, engineers' comments, and they talk about there is, seems to be some sort of potential easement to that alleyway. Um, has it been determined what type of easement that is? Is it a loading type easement? And will this canopy preclude that being used for that purpose in the future?
Uh, there are four easements in that area. Um, a number, one is for the, um, emergency stick case in the building, there's HVAC equipment, um, and there is a loading and access, um, but it, it's not gonna be in any way infringed on by the canopy.
Okay, any other questions? Byron, your hand's up again, or is it up from before? Okay. Uh, Sam, we're good with the screen, if we can pull back. And, uh, again, the public hearing's open, so we'll recognize if anybody, uh, in the audience has a question regarding this application, if you could make yourself known, uh, we'll take that question. If not, we will close the public hearing, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, thank you, Erin, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name, but thank you both for your testimony. Um, any other questions from the board? Uh, if not, we've got on our recommendations to, uh, two point one. To grant ADR approval for building renovations, facade updates, and regrading a portion of the alley at Ten Pleasant Street Extension in the central performance district, subject to the following precedent conditions, which are outlined in precedent conditions one and two. Would someone like to make a motion to grant ADR approval as outlined?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made by John Regan, seconded by Suzanne. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to our agenda, item seven F. Just when you thought we were done, we'll go back to signs, so seven F, if we could read that into the record, Heather?
Hodges Development Corporation, on behalf of Brick Smith, request ADR approval for the installation of a new non-illuminated wall sign at two eleven Loudon Road in Gate New Performance District. Uh, this is one that was pulled from consent due to, uh, being previously installed, and I believe that ADR had some recommendations as well. Sam, can you give me more information on that?
Yeah, ADR had seen this sign, I wanna say, two months ago, and they had, um, provided some feedback to the applicant, and, um, what I'm about to share, um, this is, uh, in line with what, um, ADR wanted to see. They came back, uh, to ADR this month, and, um, ADR recommended approval, uh, as redesign.
Okay, so we don't really need to talk too, too much about that, is that right, Sam?
Yes, and for clarification, this sign here will be removed.
That will be removed. Okay. Okay, any, uh, any member of the board have any questions regarding this sign? Any member of the audience wish to speak, uh, regarding this sign? You'd make yourself known, raise your hand. If not, we had opened the public hearing, hadn't we, Heather? Didn't you hear me say, we opened the public hearing? Thank you, John Regan, for recognizing that we did open the public hearing, so now we'll close the public hearing. Uh, and, uh, you would take a motion to approve that sign as submitted with ADR recommendations.
Move approval.
And shown by Sam, uh, motion made by Counselor Champlin, seconded by Suzanne. All those in favor?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, it moves us on to item seven G in our agenda. Hodges Development Corp. again, on behalf of, uh, well, actually, go ahead, Heather, I'll have you read that.
On behalf of From the Top Care Salon, requesting ADR approval for an existing non-illuminated wall sign and externally illuminated freestanding sign at two eleven Loudon Road in the general commercial district. Um, this again was pulled from consent due to being previously installed, and I'm unaware if there were ADR comments.
Sam, do you know?
Yes, um, ADR had no comments and recommended, um, approval as submitted. In fact, uh, one comment was they appreciated how, um, the text, uh, matched on the freestanding and the, uh, wall sign.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Suzanne, seconded by David. All those in favor? By roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Reed?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, item seven H, which is again Hodges Development Corp., if we could read that into the record?
Uh, on behalf of Splendor Cardcarkic, requesting ADR approval for an existing non-illuminated wall sign and externally illuminated freestanding sign at two eleven Loudon Road in the general commercial district.
Okay, Sam, any update on that?
Uh, yes, and I'll, I'll share the screen on this one. Um, so the, uh, tenant is proposing to update this sign. This is the wall sign, um, using this opportunity, uh, to seek retroactive approval to update this sign. Um, their existing, um, freestanding is this panel right here. I believe this sign has been there for over twenty years, as with most of these in this, um, plaza. Um, the only comment from ADR, um, and this was a, I believe it was a four to one vote, um, was that, uh, there was some concern over how this sign does not match, um, in text, color, um, character to the freestanding panel sign. Um, however, um, the, uh, applicant and tenant, um, was not concerned. This is their business, it's worked for them for quite a long time. Um, so they would like to move forward with it, um, and ADR did vote to approve a submitted, uh, four to one.
Okay, uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted with ADR comments?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by John Regan, seconded by David Fox. All those in favor?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the ADR recommendation?
ADR recommended that they didn't need the, well, I don't think, uh, ADR had a recommendation regarding that, the oh, yes, true, Heather, so we don't wanna recognize the ADR recom, recommendations, is that right, Sam, or not?
There, there were no actual recommendations. The recommendation was to approve, so there were just comments.
Okay, comments, sorry.
I apologize, just wanna make sure we weren't approving.
So let's just, let's just go through that again, so with no comments, so would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Champlin, seconded by Suzanne. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, it moves us on to, uh, item seven I. Down into the lower, the lower end of the alphabet here, it's a long agenda. So go ahead, Heather.
Uh, Signarama, on behalf of Dan O'Brien Kia, request ADR approval for the replacement of an internally illuminated wall sign, relocation of an internally illuminated wall sign, and the replacement of a non-illuminated freestanding sign at one fifty eight Manchester Street on Highway Commercial District. Um, the sign also was previously installed.
Yes.
The sign's already up, okay.
So, uh, this, um, was associated, uh, there was a building permit performance district before us a little while ago. Um, the Kia building was updating the facade. But there's only one sign that has previously been installed, and that is this sign. This was, um, from the original building. Building was updated, this was reinstalled. Um, the doubling of the application fee, um, was imposed. They recognized it, they were willing to pay it. Um, but now, um, they're adding, uh, additional signage here on the front of the building, as well as a directional, um, for parts and service. ADR's comments, uh, were that all the reds across all the signs would be the same shade of red, and that this kind of halo black line around the Dan O'Brien be removed.
Okay, uh, any comments from the applicant, or is the applicant here?
I spoke with, uh, Bill Lustig from Signarama, and he said he would not be able to make it.
Okay, uh, so, uh, any member of the audience wish to address this? I didn't ask that in the other one, but I will in this one. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted with ADR recommendations?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion was made by John Regan. Can I take a second for you, Byron?
Yes, you may.
Uh, seconded by Counselor Champlin. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Okay, and that moves us on to seven J, if we could read that into the record?
Mr. Chairman, that's what I call keeping it awesome.
Yeah, that's okay, there you go.
Signarama, on behalf of Modern Man Barber Shop and Shave Parlor, request ADR approval for the replacement of two window signs and a freestanding sign in two fifty three South Main Street in the urban residential district. Um, this is again the last sign that had also had, had been, was pulled from consent due to being previously installed. And now Sam may have an update.
Do. So, um, a couple things, uh, this, um, kind of banner sign that you can see in the window, um, that was moved and, and installed kind of against the glass inside, just as a temporary, uh, from another location. Um, and then this, uh, freestanding sign, I believe, was the other one that was already installed. This vinyl, uh, window graphic was not installed. But those are the signs, um, there, yeah, this is the second window sign as well. Um, ADR's comment, um, there's really only just the one, which was relative to, um, uh, some black outlining around the E and the R to, uh, stand out against the barber pole and the logo.
Okay, um, I, I would agree with that. You can hardly even read it, even when you're zooming in on it, never mind from the street. I mean, I guess you're gonna get the idea, but it it's hard to read, uh, and these signs are already up.
Uh, no, not only the, um, the freestanding sign, the window graphic is not. The only thing that is in the window is this, um, what I believe was formerly a wall sign at a normal location, that they just put up in the window.
Tell me about, um, a, a flag pole that's out there as well, that has Barber Shop on it, that's out by the street. Is that that's not, is that going against their sign, um, total? So, right now, if you drove by there, there's a, well, there was, a, a week or so ago, one of those big flag pole signs that kind of flaps in the breeze, uh, a temporary sign, I'm sure, but how does, how does a business handle that in that location?
That could very well be a temporary sign, which CO can issue temporary sign permits for, um, that That could very well be a temporary sign, which code can issue temporary sign permits for, um that is not reviewed by ADR. So upon approval of these signs, it should be taken down, and I will follow up with code about that.
So and if it's in the city right away as well, which I think it was, it was right up next to the sidewalk?
Yeah, that uh I'll follow up with code code about that.
Okay. Um I don't have to report it on the see it, click it, fix it, or whatever that app is, so I will leave it in your good hands. Um would anybody, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding this uh?
I I do, and I actually, I think I have a, I have a better idea. Um instead of putting an outline around the letter, all they have to do is darken the foot of that pole. Cause I think it will be very awkward to put a line around the letter, and if you look at the very bottom, it's like a light gray.
Yeah, so if it was.
And I think the lettering will stick out if they just darken that.
Yeah.
If that's an issue for design review, I wouldn't recommend putting a line around it.
Okay. All right, well, let's leave it in their capable hands, that we would like to see it more readable from the street.
Right.
And and approve it or disapprove it with that, uh would Suzanne, would you like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted?
Um I will.
With the.
With the recommendations, yes, I'll make that approval.
Okay. Someone like to second, second that, I got the second, I think David seconded that, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Consul Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Your microphone's getting very echoey and far away, maybe it was because you were far away. Um okay, so that moves us on to item eight in our agenda for site plan subdivisions and conditional use permit applications. Uh can we read item eight A into the record?
For Daniel Christman and Amber Brooks are requesting amendment, uh an amendment to conditions of a previously approved minor subdivision. Regarding a shared driveway at thirty five Hot Hole Pond Road in the open space residential district. Um I don't believe there are any uh determination completeness required for this and. Uh or or a DRI, um the best can probably give you an update.
Beth, you haven't heard from Beth at all?
I'm asleep over here.
Welcome, Beth.
Thanks. Um so this is one, if we could go back in our time machine to two thousand eight and question why. They made this a this uh requirement, so the um I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. The three lot subdivision back in two thousand eight, the planning board required a twenty-two foot wide paved shared driveway. Um the width of Hot Hole Pond Road itself is only eighteen feet, so it'd be more robust than the actual traveled road. So the um Daniel and Amber purchased thirty-five Hot Hole Pond Road, which is the property um most east of the three lot subdivision. This lot has not been developed over the past thirteen years because of the driveway condition, um we've talked to several people over the past several years, and it's always been. Prohibitive, but the um. That applicant this time around actually reached out and asked us to come out there and take a look, and we met with the fire um marshal and engineering. And um the owner of the adjacent parcel, um I believe he's also on the call. To use the existing gravel driveway alignment, reduce it in size and just beef it up. Um so that fire apparatus could get up there and are recommending to reduce the. Size and the detail of the gravel drive and just pave the apron as is typically required. Um it's more in context with the neighborhood and we're supportive of this.
Okay.
Um and I'm sorry, just one quick thing, um we are going to recommend that they secure a revised driveway easement. With the abutting property owners, um it will not only protect them, but any future owners, um because of this. Um revised alignment, so that's not in my report, that's something based on um Jeff Santa Cruz had brought this to my attention and.
Okay, so can we, so i- it will make sure that we get that into the motion uh when we, when we get to that point. Uh so any other, okay, thank you for sharing that screen, if you can pull that back so I can see everybody again, hey, there we go. Um okay, any questions from the board on this uh on this application? The public hearing is open, so we'll ask the uh the public if any of the public has a question regarding this application, if you could make yourself known?
Just have the applicants, if they want to speak, they can raise their hand.
I think we're good, um let's uh let's go ahead and see what the board likes here, um would someone like to make, I am I ready for a motion? Uh Heather, I don't, I think we're good to go.
Uh sure, if you if you want to close the public hearing and.
Yeah, so. Let's close the public hearing, um and would someone like to make a motion to authorize the amendment to the conditions of the two thousand eight subdivision? To allow for the construction of a of a twelve to fifteen foot wide gravel driveway as shown on the red lined plan. With the condition that additional depth of gravel be added for stabilization and the driveway apron be paved in accordance with city. Uh with the City of Concord construction standards, two, as part of the motion state that all conditions of the original approval shall remain in effective force. I'm sorry, and three, Beth is.
Um and recommend that the applicant secure a revised driveway easement from abutting property owners for the new driveway alignment.
Okay, and as Beth outlined for number three, would someone like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, are we, are we recommending that as a subsequent condition prior to CO, or are we recommending it as a?
Uh I think it's probably a condition of approval, isn't it? There's no CO involved.
There's a CO, they have to get a building permit for their house, yep, and they'll be getting a driveway permit.
Yeah.
So moved.
No, wait, wait, hang on, hang on.
Am I moving too fast?
You're moving too fast, let's figure out what.
Are we doing that prior to building permit or prior to CO?
I don't think we should do it prior to building permit.
So as a subsequent condition prior to CO?
Prior to CO.
Is that okay? Beth?
That's fine, it's a private, that was, my only hesitation is it's a private matter between them. Um.
So if they, if they didn't get it, they could still go ahead with the plan, right? If they didn't get the updated easement?
Right.
Just protects them and the neighbors later on.
Right.
Do we want to put it in?
I'm staring at Heather.
I I had said I was fine with it, with it not being there, but I felt like we got strong. Uh feedback from engineering that 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 it should be required, so um Dave, if you are on the call. And you would like to chine it, chime in, um is this something that you feel should be required as a condition of prior to receiving a CO? Or is this something that we are, that we are able to leave as between the private pro- parties?
We're talking about um.
The easement, rel- relining the easement.
Hot Hole, Hot Hole Pond.
Yep, no, I think I think it'd be fine if that was done um prior to CO.
As a condition of getting a CO?
As a condition, exactly, yes.
So Beth's concern was it's too, it's too private, it's a private matter between two private entities, right? I mean, if they don't get it, if they, if they don't get an updated easement, does that mean they can't get a CO? I can see where you're headed, Beth, I can see Beth's wheels turning.
Well, i- if they didn't, then the driveway would be. Into a piece of property and the driveway would be on someone else's property. And and that could remain that way in into perpetuity if the easement wasn't actually, if there wasn't some leverage to make sure the easement was. Um was secured.
Okay.
There's, yeah, can we, so Mark Christman and um Walt Griffin, they're the property owners. Can we bring them into this discussion, cause I.
I think Mark's got his hand up, Heather.
Yeah.
Okay, are are we formally reopening the public hearing?
I don't think we closed it, did we?
You did.
We'll reopen again, but the record night for reopening the public hearing.
Um so Mark, I am promoting you to Palace, and Walt and Chris, I am also promoting you to Palace.
Okay, you've been promoted, if you can unmute yourself so we can hear you, and then just state your names to the record?
Hi, I'm Mark Christman, I'm um uh Daniel Christman's dad and and power of attorney for uh for this matter. Um my comment on the um. O- o- on this is, the easement's already in place and has been approved, it's not as if an amendment. To the easement is going to erase that, or or is it, erase that original um approved. Um subdivision plan with the driveway easement, we're just modifying the existing, so I guess I'm. Confused as why we would need um to get anything um as a condition of the CO. If it's just a modification, it actually lessens the impact on that, on that um that other abutter's property, so. Um I guess.
So the concern, Mark, is that it, the realignment is gonna be outside of what is shown on the survey as the easement plan. So it's just, do you have the permission to go outside of that easement area? And in the future, if, you know, you're all in agreement right now, but in ten years, when nobody, none of. These same property owners live there, is it gonna be a contentious issue that the driveway is not within that driveway easement?
Well, the. The property owner that we're talking about that that hasn't weighed in on this, um we're not. Doing anything differently on his property, it's it's Walt and Christine Griffin's. That we're doing something different to, so in effect, I don't think we're really. Um changing anything as far as what, what the original subdivision plan called for. If you look at that red line drawing, um we're not, we're basically just narrowing. What was, what was previously approved.
There's, but, I mean, there's just one minor section there, and then maybe if you, I don't know if you're looking at your computer, Mark.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just that minor section right there.
Yeah. So everything else is off of, off of his property, um so, I mean, I don't have a problem. Getting that, and I think I, and and I agree that it, it benefits both parties, but. I'm not sure it should be a condition of of uh getting a CO. So I would, I would respectfully request that that it not be a condition of a CO to get that. Um. In any kind of agreement with that other, other abutter.
Okay, thank you very much, I think Mister Griffin is on the line as well, if you've got any comments, Mister Griffin, you'd like to add?
Um yeah, um Mister Christman and I have met together out on the property several times. And I was there when uh Beth and the city engineer and the city fire marshal were out there giving the okay to everything that Mister Christman. And his son, daughter-in-law wanna do, and I'm perfectly fine with it, and as as Mark mentioned. Um what what we're proposing actually uses less land than the original plan, we're making a great improvement on the exist. On the previous plan, and I'm making it much more commonsensical, using less land. Using the existing driveway instead of building a bunch of new ones, and um so Mark has an excellent plan that the city engineer has agreed with. Um I have no problem putting in writing my agreement uh if the city or Mark wants that. I'm glad to give it, uh my wife Christine as well, and um it really um. Uh, you know, we've got a a ten and a half foot wide driveway, we're gonna add about, Mark is gonna add about two feet width to that. And then we're done, and so it's, and and a little bit of pavement apron where it meets the road. Um so um I really think uh it's a, it's a really excellent uh way to enable this lot to to finally. Finally be developed as was the original intent.
Great, okay, thank you for your testimony, Heather?
So um I didn't realize, I'm glad that Beth showed that, because I didn't realize the area was so tiny, that. That I thought it was a larger area that wasn't within the easement area, um so really, uh I think I'm. I think I'm fine with it the way it is, because the worst that could happen is that in ten years, when, you know, if Mister Griffin. Sells his property and a new property owner comes in and says, hey, you're not following the line of the easement, you're outside of the easement. Move it, you have to move it. You you're you're taking the risk that you're gonna have to, you know, shift it over into following, following what the original easement said. They would have a legal um right to tell you to remove that whatever, fifteen square feet of pavement and relocate it. Um why would they do that? I don't know, neighbors that don't get along do cra- crazy strange things. But it's something that could happen in like, and you know, some, someday down the line, it could happen.
They can, they could go ahead and do the easement on their own and and, you know, square this up by themselves without.
Like if Mister Griffin ever decides they're gonna move, you know, then then it'd probably be a good idea to. To amend those easement documents, because it's in the deed, the location of the easement is in the deed. So the property owner, whatever future property owner, has the legal right to make you comply with that. And you know, if they decided, we don't want this ten square feet over here, or they just don't like you, and they're trying to make your life difficult. They could, they could do that, um and so.
Glad to uh do that paperwork in order to uh for future protection and quality, certainly glad to uh. Uh Mark and I would be glad, I think, to work on uh with the city on getting on paper, whatever needs to be got on paper. To keep things preserved for the future.
Yeah, and it's really just an update of the deed, I mean, we're not asking you to update the plans, which would be more expensive to hire somebody to do that. But updating the language of the deed so that it um indicates where the actual paved area is. Would, is gonna benefit um the Christmas.
Let's uh, let's let you guys just resolve that on your own, Byron, did you have a question before we close the public hearing again?
No, just a comment, I I just gonna say that I I hope that staff is capturing all of this so that uh twenty years from now, uh no future.
Yeah, good point, touche, that's a good point, okay, let's uh, any other co- any other comments or questions, we wanna close the public hearing?
So Chairman, if I could, I I just want to mention, I'm the one that brought this forward to Beth's attention, and it was strictly to protect the owners.
Yeah.
You know, if they take that outside this meeting, that's fine, I just, I've seen these, I've done land development for a long time, and I've seen where one land owner. Seems fine with it, ten years down the line, suddenly they put a big boulder there and becomes an issue, especially where the fire marshal's gone out there and taken a look. So I just.
Keep doing, keep doing what you're doing, Jeff, cause that's what we want, that's what we want, we want those questions asked, so. Okay, so so go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you uh gentlemen for your testimony, we'll uh put you back in, put you back in as. Attendees, if we can clear that out, Heather, um.
Yeah, um you have a couple hand raised from the, from the um, I don't know if you want to do that.
Cedar Home and I got Byron still, Byron, I think left from the floor, so he's good, David?
Uh yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so um so a condition will that they uh a condition. They will um um correct the deed, but not the plan, as as um prior to CO?
We're not, we're just making it a recommendation that they revise the deed, and we're not gonna condition it to the CO. We're leaving it to them as their, I think.
Yes, I think.
That's where we're heading.
And we will, we will revise the deed properly to um make sure there are not future problems or that. Somebody can't uh make a mess of things just because they feel like doing so.
Good with that, Dave, I don't think you're good with that, but.
Well, I I don't see the difference, really, if they're, if they're agreeable to revising the deed, uh why not just make it so? Where I, my job is to administer the driveway permit, and the driveway permit i- is always a condition of the CO. Uh and this is a piece of the driveway, so if they're willing to uh adjust the deed. Uh and 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 we're talking about nine months from now when the house is 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 done, is that right? Right, there's still a house to be built, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So it should be plenty of time to do that.
I have no problem with that, would that be okay with you, Mark, in the coming months, we can get that done together?
I'm sure we can get that done.
Okay, so we'll go back to leave, putting it in as a condition of a CO?
Excellent, okay, great, thank you.
All right, Matt, I saw your hand go up, Matt, you good, okay, uh any other questions from the board? No, gonna close the public hearing last time. All right, so let's close the public hearing. All right, so let's close the public hearing. We'll put those folks back in as audience attendees. Again, thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony. Would someone like to make a motion to, and again, I outlined it here under one, which is to authorize the amendment to the conditions of 2008 subdivision to allow for the construction of 12-foot wide gravel driveway as shown in the red line plan with the condition that the additional depth of driveway be stabilized, gravel be added for stabilization in the driveway apron paved in accordance with the city's of Concord construction standards. Um, number two, all conditions of the original approval shall remain in full force and effect. And number three, Beth, help me out, that the easement will be updated prior to issuance of C O. Is that right?
Dave wants? Yes.
Yes, good. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to?
Motion. I'll make the motion.
Jeff made the motion. We have a second. Matt seconded it. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Uh, Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye, sorry about that.
Uh, Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye, she's waving her hand.
Aye, yeah, okay. Member Hicks?
Aye.
Sorry, my computer is going out with the wind. I'm an aye.
There we go. She's an aye. Okay, so that motion carries. Again, thank you, everybody, for your testimony on that. Uh, let's move on in our agenda to item eight B, if we could read that into the record.
Will Cox and Barton, on behalf of 3G Eagle LLC, request major site plan approval for construction of a new parking lot, a conditionally used permit for the addition of impervious surface in the Aquifer Protection District, and a C U P to construct fewer spaces that are required at 2500 First Street in the I N Industrial District. Um, this was previously determined complete, not a development original impact, and Sam will have an update for you.
Sure. Um, so this actually was a D R I and this did go to the town of Pembroke. I received communication from their town planner that the planning board had no comments on this. Um, it went to Pembroke because this is the limit of the Aquifer Protection District, um, right here, um, relative to the, uh, I believe the Sioux Cook River, um, which serves the Pembroke water supply. Um, so. Sorry?
The South Cook.
You know, I say it both ways. I can never get it right. Um, so the, yeah, the applicant is proposing to remove this pavement area, the, uh, the trees here. Um, and then, uh, create an additional, I believe this is loading area here, uh, parking here. Um, in, in the event that the conditionally use permit for the reduction in parking spaces is approved, this would be the layout. Um, so we'd still see the loading area here and and parking, just these further, um, east parking spaces would not be constructed. The, the C U Ps are complimentary in a way, where a conditionally used permit is required uh, for the expansion of impervious surfaces within the Aquifer Protection District. However, um, there is the additional C U P to reduce parking. Um, so there is a reduction in, um, from the maximum of what they would be building, although there is still a net increase in, uh, impervious surface coverage in the Aquifer Protection District. And I believe we have Aaron Lambert here and a few others as well to speak on this project.
Great. If you could open them up and bring them to the table, that would be great. What's, um?
Morning, Aaron. I only have Aaron Lambert. I don't have anyone else.
Hi, thank you. I'm back. Chris Brown should also be on the line again if. I'll start my video, but if it's okay with you, I'm also going to share my screen so I could walk through a couple of additions to the wonderful presentation that Sam already gave you. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Um, so as Sam said, we are, um, this is an existing building. It's sighted on the corner of Hennecker Street and Antrim Street. It's a 24,000 square foot building. Um, it's currently single tenant. And so 3G Eagle is proposing to divide this into three suites um, in, in order to give each of those suites, um, access. They're going to along the back of the building, which is the east facade, they're proposing to put in five overhead doors. Um, there's a possibility this fifth one could be a loading dock and we've provided, um, a separate grading and drainage plan in the event that the tenant for suite two, um, would prefer to have a loading dock in lieu of an overhead door. Um, so all of the proposed improvements, um, are predominantly limited to the back with the exception of we are providing a new sidewalk along the front to provide direct access into suite two and suite three, as well as to provide access to the city right away. Um, and so this blue line that I've drawn is that Aquifer Protection District, um, that Sam mentioned. The site is 3.3 acres, so it's, it's basically bisected. This corner of the building, um, is in the Aquifer Protection as well as the impervious. Uh, when this site was originally permitted and built in 2000, 2007 and 2008, the Aquifer Protection District didn't exist yet. Um, otherwise this would have needed a C U P then, so we are perform, uh, requesting one now. Uh, but we do believe that the, um, the 59 spaces that are required, um, but per the city ordinance, excuse me, 69 parking spaces is more than they would, we would request a conditionally used permit to defer 19 of those and build 50. We would build this 12 space parking lot, um, with an 80 accessible access here. We would build these.
We can't see where you're pointing.
Oh, you can't see my mouse?
I can't see your mouse.
Okay, um, well, the, the parking, if you can look at the inset map here, we're proposing to build the 11 spaces, which would be the seven plus a few more, and I apologize. I don't know why you can't see my mouse.
We can't see it.
I can see.
Oh, you can?
I can.
Okay.
It's sort of blending, sort of blending.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll try to figure that out better next time. I apologize.
Just shake it.
So basically, let me just switch to this plan because this, this will talk a little bit about the elements that support our request for um, building impervious area in the Aquifer Protection District. The whole area, the whole subdivision is comprised of well-draining soils, so all of the soils, excuse me, all of the runoff from either Hennecker Street, Antrim Street, or the, the build outs of the lots is directed to ponds that were built as part of the subdivision. They all infiltrate. What we're proposing to do, this is, um, an excerpt from our drainage area map from our drainage report. Um, we're proposing to capture all of the stormwater from the building. Um, it's this orange line, as well as the majority of this impervious area and this new parking lot. Are we going to direct that to an underground infiltration gallery? So it'll be a series of underground chambers. Um, and the reason that we're directing as much water to that as possible is that we're going to amend the soils below the gallery. Um, right now, the soils are rather fast in draining, and so the stormwater doesn't get um, as much treatment as it will. When we amend the soils below the gallery, then all of the runoff will get adequate treatment before it enters and recharges the groundwater. Um, one of the comments that came out of the Conservation Commission was a request for us to add hoods to the series of catch basins, so we will do that. Um, and so you can see we're capturing as much runoff from our new impervious as possible. We also sighted the gallery. It's the blue outline that you see on the screen. We cited that as close to or outside of the Aquifer Protection as much as we could. Um, the ideal location would have been to place it right here, but the whole gallery would have been more in the Aquifer Protection, so we did um, cite it as far outside of or as much outside it as we could. Um, and this is the, you know, the distance we needed from the building, so we did take that into consideration. And this gallery will, um, hold and infiltrate the 100-year storm. Um, the other thing that I wanted to to mention is that, um, another comment that came out of the Conservation Commission was they asked us if we could add a couple more trees. Um, the plan you see on the left would be for the full build out, um, but we're hopeful that the conditionally used permit to defer parking will be approved. Um, and these one, two, these one, two, three trees were new. These one, two, three trees were to be preserved. Um, and we're proposing to add three or four more trees along the outside edge of this parking. Uh, we just need to make sure that we can, that those trees can be there. Um, we're inside the EverSource easement, so we're also working with them. Um, but we are proposing to add more trees, um, in response to the comment that we received from the Conservation Commission. Um, the Conservation Commission was in favor of the C U P to reduce the impervious, um, surface, especially when we talked about how that additional area wasn't needed. Um, there are a couple of conditions of the conditionally used permit to build in the Aquifer Protection District that will give the city additional protections, um, for having that impervious there. So we are providing the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for construction, um, if there are any. Um, if you go through my list, have a, I'm going to stop sharing here for a moment if you don't mind. Um, we will, let's see. Um, there will be a source control plan if there are any regulated substances, um, by the tenants in those spaces. Uh, we will provide a salt minimization plan in accordance with the New Hampshire D E S rules and requirements. Um, and there will be a note that there will be, that no expansion of the development is permitted in the Aquifer Protection District without coming back to um, the city for additional approvals. Um, so that is the extent of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might.
Okay, I think we got one. Suzanne?
Uh, yeah, I did notice a comment from staff that they wanted the Japanese tree lilac to be replaced. But, um, I was looking at the plant schedule and I think every single tree they spec out is an ornamental tree.
We can certainly look to see if we can put larger trees, and I know one of the conversations we are having with EverSource is that they have a maximum height. Um, so we have to keep them below, um, so we aren't able to put, for example, some of the oaks or maple or some of the other sort of robust shade trees that we tend to put. I will certainly work with, um, Sam and our landscape architect um, to, to see if there's something more significant that we can put in there that will also comply with.
Well, and I, yeah, and also thinking more of natives, but every single one of those trees is in the right of way?
Uh, the majority of them are. Um, we have a gas easement that runs through, and then the majority of them are in the EverSource easement. There's only, um, I think, two trees that are outside of it.
So at the very minimum, those trees should not be an ornamental, but I think there are some natives because I'm looking at, you know, ginkgo biloba is not a native. And I think a red bud is marginally hardy. So I think that there were some trees that maybe you could, you could pick that will still provide the shade.
Right, okay, so shade trees that are more native and non-ornamental. Okay.
Yeah, or shade trees.
Perfect.
If they're in the parking lot area. And I get it with the, um, the EverSource easement, but there, I'm sure there are some better selections that'll be more sustainable.
Okay, we will certainly, and I will work with Sam on that.
I think those are the only comments from A D R was regarding the landscaping, right? I, I noticed on the A D R comments, it said that you will continue to work, uh, with the applicant regarding landscaping. Was there anything else, Sam, other than trees?
No, that was it.
Okay. And no other concerns with the Aquifer District or, and you said Pembroke was, was.
Both, uh, both Pembroke and the Conservation Commission were supportive.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Brown. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good to see you. Okay, any other questions, uh, from the board regarding this? Jeff?
Yeah, I'm going to pull up my usual. Um, I did note, looking at your plan, the existing ADA spaces are non-compliant. Um, the dimensionally, they don't meet, and also their location. Um, ADA does require you to put parking spaces as close to the accessible ramp as possible. So I would suggest that those actually get relocated and restriped to, to meet that standard. Especially with your, now that you're splitting the building into multiple tenants, you have possibility of, you know, more users. Uh, the only other thing I did note is there is a private sign, the visitor parking sign with the arrow that's actually located in city right of way, right at the entrance to the driveway.
An existing, it's existing, Jeff?
Yeah, it's an existing visitor parking. If you, if you had the plan up, it's right next to the telephone pole, just to the right of the driveway. I think it's.
Aaron, is there a sign, is there a sign package or lighting or anything like that with this as well?
There is a lighting plan, um, and there's no new signage proposed at this time. If we do new signage, we will go through the sign permit application process.
Okay, how does, how does snow removal affect, uh, the Aquifer or anything with that?
Now, the salt minimization plan will certainly assist with that, and then we will, we'll keep, um, snow out of there, but some of, we can't store piles of snow in the EverSource easement anyway, so we'll try to keep as much out of there, but that's why that salt minimization plan is important.
Okay, Jeff, I cut you off. I'm sorry. You good?
No, I'm good. You didn't cut me off. I was just, the only thing I was going to say is the sign could be moved just to the back of the sidewalk if they want to retain the visitor parking sign, and then it would be outside city right of way.
Okay. Um, any other questions from the board? No? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? Make yourself known. I don't see anybody raising their hand. I got Byron Champlin. Go ahead, Byron.
Yeah, I, I do not have a question for the applicant, but I have a, a proofreading note, Mr., Mr. Chairman, if appropriate at this time. Um, on page two of the, of the staff report, uh, to the planning board, uh, section two, 2.1, first paragraph, uh, last sentence, second line from the bottom. Uh, I believe there's a typo in there that says will be submitted to the city and will be undated on an annual basis. I suspect that was supposed to be updated.
Good catch. Good catch, undated. Much as I'm sure.
Not sure how that would be.
Undated material, so we'll make a note to that when we do the, uh, when we do the approvals. Uh, thank you, Byron. Any other questions or comments before we close the public hearing? No? Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you both for your testimony and, uh, we will close the public hearing if we could push them back, Heather, uh, as attendees or somebody. I don't know if Heather's here. Uh, let's go ahead and see where we go here. We've got recommendations from staff uh, to grant the conditionally used permits to Articles 28, 3 dash 6 D 4 and 28, 7 dash 11 B for the expansion of impervious area within the Aquifer Protection District and construction of fewer parking spaces than is required. Uh, respectfully given, the applicant has demonstrated that there is adequate area to construct the required parking spaces. If needed, the Conservation Commission has recommended granting both the C U Ps with the recommendation that the hoods be installed in all the site catch basins, and the town of Pembroke has no comments from the plan. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the conditionally used permits as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Champlin, seconded by Jeff Santa Cruz. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Okay, so moves us to 4.2, uh, grant A D R approval for the building design, landscape and site layout. Can we do that as one with 3, 4.3, Heather? Or should we do separately?
You know, I'm not looking at them to see.
It should be done separately, please, Rich.
4.3 is to grant A D R approval for the building design, landscape and site layout. Would someone like to make a motion to grant A D R approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Champlin, seconded by David Fox. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Okay, and 4.3, which is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed parking and loading area expansion and associated site improvements at 25, 25 Hennecker Street in the I N Industrial District, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. Uh, that's precedent conditions one through five, subsequent conditions one through three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion was made by Counselor Champlin. I'll second that motion. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Counselor Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz? You're muted.
I just have a question.
Okay.
Do we need to add in the addition or clarification of the ADA spaces into these conditions somewhere?
Uh, good question. So, yeah, we do need to add them in. Um, so the Jeff's point regarding moving of the ADA compliant, uh, but excuse me, moving of the handicap accessible parking spots to the closest available spot, is that, is that right, Jeff?
And making sure. And making sure they're dimensionally correct per the standards.
Dimensionally correct. So can we, I don't know, Sam or Beth or whoever's playing this is, can we add that in as a subsequent or precedent condition?
That'd be a precedent.
So we're gonna put that in as precedent condition six, uh, to make the necessary accommodations to the handicap parking that it is ADA compliant, is that appropriately outlined? Okay, getting some nods of the head. Uh, so does that change a second and a, and a motion to approve for anybody? No? So we've got the motion and we've got the second, um.
I'll just do the roll call again.
Yeah, all those in favor by roll call?
Uh, Chairman Woodburn?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Smithmire?
Aye.
Okay, thank you Jeff for keeping us honest with that and, uh, thank you Aaron and Chris for the presentation. You're all set. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item eight C. Um, only two left folks, so hang with us here. Eight C is, uh, if we could read that into the record Heather?
Dakota Partners, on behalf of PNM Realty of Concord LLC, requests comprehensive development plan approval for a mixed-use development consisting of residential multifamily buildings and three commercial pad sites for a property off of Langdon Ave in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District. Um, this is, has not yet been, this application, uh, they're gonna come, be coming in for major site plan approval um, in this Performance District, uh, staff, I'm just gonna give a little bit of background about why we're here because we don't normally do comprehensive development plans. Um, they, or, or we don't often do them by themselves. Uh, as, in, at, in order to do residential in the Opportunity Corridor District, um, they had to provide a, basically a master plan of sorts to demonstrate what type of development they're going to be doing here. Um, because historically residential development has not been allowed in Opportunity Corridor District. Um, we amended the ordinance, uh, last year sometime to allow residential district, residential development in these districts because of the need for housing, um, also to encourage, um, you know, better, m- m- more types of housing in, that we don't have in Concord. So I met with this applicant, um, Beth and I both met with this applicant several times to talk about the plan and the layout. So this is essentially a concept plan, uh, seventy Pembroke did the same thing, but they did it in conjunction with their master, uh, with their major site plan. So we did it all in one meeting. Um, these folks have come, uh, which I think is a good idea, ahead of time to get a comprehensive development plan approval. Once, if they get this approval from you, they will come back with their major site plan application to be determined complete and go through the plan approval process. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll, uh, hand it over to Beth to give a short summary of the project.
Um, before you do that Heather, is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead Beth.
Um, I'm gonna share my screen real quick. So we, yeah, we've been working with the applicant. Um, this is the latest version, which is different than what you all saw. Um, they went out, they've been doing some site work and confirmed some wetland locations, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt again Beth. So just for clarification, Langdon Avenue, because it's not one that a lot of people hear is off of South Main Street, uh, in the South End Marsh area, which used to be part of the railroad mechanisms, is that right?
Correct, yeah. I assume the applicant will go, give more of a thorough presentation of the site.
Okay, sorry.
That's right, so, um, we've provided them comments, we met with them on Monday, again, just to go over some recommendations of, um, phasing as far as access for the dead end road because they're proposing to do this in several phases with financing over the next few years. Um, so that's some of the things that they'll have to figure out as they move forward with their major site plan application. Um, but they, we've also provided some recommendations for pedestrian, um, circulation, which you'll see in our report. But I think I'll just let the applicant go through, um, we're just, we're recommending approval of the CDP so they can move forward and come back with their major site plan application where it'll be more flushed out, um, and provide more information then.
Great, so if the applicant, uh, is out there, if you could make yourself known so we can, uh, push you up as a panelist to the big table, that would be great. I see a hand up.
I think Member Regan got excellently put in the attendees section, so I'm sorry John, I'm not sure how.
That's okay, I was following along.
Excuse me?
It, it, it's okay, because I was following along, I didn't know all of a sudden I was not being called on, but, uh.
No, I'm just concerned that. I apologize, uh, I didn't want, you shouldn't be left out of motions, so I'm not sure at what point that happened, but, um, yeah.
I didn't disagree with anything that was being done, so.
So we got your, your, your post, uh, eye for all of the motions that were made.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's welcome, uh, Mr. Nato and Mr. Bloomfield to the table. If you gentlemen could state your names for the record.
Hi everyone, Chris Nato of Novus Group.
I'm Peter Bloomfield, uh, owner of PNM Realty.
And, uh, Heather, could you, uh, also promote Mark Pilott, he should be on there as well?
Yes, thank you.
Mark is with Dakota Partners and, uh, he can introduce himself when you, I'm just gonna share my screen if that's okay.
Perfect, yep, thank you.
So I'll get started, um, as we regenerate here, sorry, hold on a sec, second. All right, so, uh, we have a thirty-six acre parcel again in the South End, uh, adjacent to the South End Marsh, which is, uh, on the south end of the parcel. Uh, thirty-six acres bound by South Bean Street, uh, along the west side, the railroad, along the east side, Langdon Ave, on the north side, which is a private street. And then again, the South End Marsh on the south side. Uh, we're proposing three different land units. Uh, this is a mixed-use development, consisting of commercial and residential development. So the first land, uh, land use parcel is the existing Evo Climbing Gym that's out there right now. It's on roughly an acre and a half parcel. The second land unit will be the residential, uh, which are these buildings back here, that those buildings consist of, uh, six buildings and a hundred and ninety-two units and a clubhouse. And then the third land unit will be commercial office mixed-use space, these two buildings right here along Langdon Ave. Uh, and I'll go through each one of them one by one. So again, the, the first, uh, which is land unit three, the two office buildings, two office mixed-use buildings. One's a two-story eighteen thousand square foot building and the other is a four-story forty-four thousand square foot building. Uh, and, uh, those will share parking, uh, not only on the, the site itself, but there's also an overflow parking over here for, uh, a total of three hundred and, I'm sorry, a hundred and, hold on just a second. Uh, two hundred and forty-eight parking spaces for the two office buildings. Um, again, the Evo, uh, building is existing with its parking here on the corner. And then the residential portion will be two twelve-unit, three-story buildings, these smaller buildings here. Uh, two three-story thirty-six unit buildings and then two three-story forty-eight unit buildings. And on the far end of the parcel, we have a clubhouse with, uh, a playground and patio. And then walkways, uh, within, uh, the, the sort of common area in the middle of, of, uh, the development. Sidewalks as well along the outskirts, uh, you know, we purposely in talking with staff, uh, congregated the buildings in the middle to create more of an urban feel. Uh, and the parking was put to the outskirts of, of the development. But the residential project will be done in phases, as Beth mentioned. Uh, phase one will be a twelve-unit building and a thirty-six unit building with the parking and the access road coming in. Phase two will be a forty-eight unit and the clubhouse. Phase three will be a forty-eight unit and then phase four will be a thirty-six unit and a twelve unit to, to round it out and complete it. Uh, we designed it so that traffic comes in, uh, the common driveway in front of Evo. Uh, and then there's a circular, um, travelway a- around the site. There will be a second means of egress to Langdon Ave, a gated access really just for emergency through the office complex. The site, I, I said it was thirty-six acres, it's actually almost thirteen acres in conservation, that's shown here in, in blue. And the dark green represents, um, and it includes a seventy-five foot vegetative no disturb buffer up against the wetlands here, so, oh, that's what that line right here is. We're gonna be asking for a conditional use permit for the, for the residential use. Um, it requires three hundred and ninety-eight parking spaces and we're proposing to just do around three hundred and then we'll ask for a conditional use permit. Although we could build them out here, we're, we don't want to if we're gonna, i- if we're successful in getting a conditional use permit. And, uh, that's really it in a nutshell. Uh, Mark, uh, Pilott is here from Dakota Partners. Uh, Mark, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add?
No, not at this time, uh, everything as you said is, uh, pretty clear of what the intention is.
So we're happy to answer questions from the board.
Great, it's a nice looking project. Um, what about the, the traffic implications as far as the different, uh, pieces? I'll take Jeff Santa Cruz's, a little bit of his, his story, because he's gonna ask the question if I didn't, so I'll ask it uh, on the, on the traffic. So everything's coming out onto South Main. Uh, how do you see that impacting that area as far as, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, a traffic light? I mean, there's nothing there now, uh, wh- what do you see happening in that as far as traffic density?
Yes, so we're, we're, we've actually retained Steve Perna to do a traffic study. We had a scoping meeting with the city. Uh, I think it was about two weeks ago. And just to, you know, at, at first glance, Steve's feeling was that, um, there likely wouldn't have to be any improvements on South Main Street at the intersection with Langdon, because the, the trip counts likely will not generate any sort of changes. Uh, perhaps maximum change would be having a right and left turn lane coming out of Langdon Ave to get out onto South Main Street, but, um, likely that the, uh, the peaks will, will differ a bit where you've got the residential people going to and from work and been PM and then the office folks coming in and PM rather than everybody leaving at once or everybody getting there at once. But we will have, we will have a full traffic study done as part of the site plan application.
So fully, fully built out, how many, how many apartment units?
Hundred and ninety-two.
Total?
Yes.
And then, uh, two commercial on the front of the property there?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, uh, questions from the board? I see any hands up?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Certainly, Jeff?
Um, on the plan we received is a little different than the color plan here, Chris. I'm just kinda curious, are you proposing any upgrades to Langdon Ave from its intersection with South Main down to the development?
Yeah, that's, that's something that will be in conversation with the City Engineering Department to see, uh, it is a private road, but, um, uh, we may, well, one improvement we're gonna make is we're adding a sidewalk, so we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna have a sidewalk from the site up along the south side of Langdon, uh, that will come up to South Main and then cross, because the sidewalk on South Main is on the other side.
Okay.
Um, but there may be some, some repaving, we're not sure whether that's gonna be required or not by the city.
Okay, one thing I noticed is your sidewalk does not actually extend down to the front of your commercial buildings?
Yep.
If I'm looking at that correctly, I mean, I'm just wondering if that's something that could be kinda looked at just because, you know, you may have people working here that don't necessarily live and may choose to walk. It's qu- quite a wide road, I think it's between twenty-eight and thirty feet. Probably the only real kinda suggestion I would have is the consideration of some striping. Just, I know it's a private road, but you have the bus company down there that has this big, huge, wide, open frontage parking area there. And maybe with the increase in traffic there, it'd be nice to kind of delineate that, that approach.
Yeah, actually, one of the recommendations from staff was that we add a bike lane here, so that, that might help with, i- in addition to striping with, with yellow and white lines, if we added a bike lane along one side as well.
Thanks Jeff. Uh, Council Champlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a, in concept, this is a, conceptually, this is a great looking project uh, and, and very exciting, particularly in that end of town. Um, I, I have two questions. One is, uh, you know, uh, particularly excited, this is designated or described as workforce housing. My first question is, how are you defining workforce housing? And the second is, do you have a timeline for phase one of the residential, uh, portion of the project or the, uh, phase one, yeah?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, workforce housing is, as defined within the state of New Hampshire. Uh, it is affordable housing, it'll be set on various, uh, brat, you know, percentages of income. Uh, so there might be some that might be market rate, there might be some at thirty percent of AMI. So it'll vary depending on that. So we're kinda going through that model right now. Our intent is to get our application in this August. So we have a very aggressive schedule, a very a- aggressive, you know, focus on this project, uh, to get it into the, this coming round of this coming, this year. So our application would go in in August and we will hopefully hear back sometime around November, December. With that said, if we get approval, we will then go into closing mode on the project, which I would hope, uh, we could close within eight months plus or minus. Uh, and from that standpoint, we'd probably try to get going into construction maybe a month or two earlier than that. Just so that we can get ahead of it, because obviously winter catches up on us very quickly and we wanna make sure we at least get out of the ground in the sense of the foundation, um, and get building. So that's kinda our initial take right now.
Great, great, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, Suzanne, I got you next? Suzanne?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, um. Um, it just triggered my memory when we were talking about the sidewalks. I would hope that as you move forward with the plans, that you would consider, um, having the sidewalks set back from the s- travelways with a median. Because my, my initial r- response is it looks more commercial than residential, so anything that you can do to make it really look like a mixed use, um, would be beneficial to the residents, I think. And I, anything we can do to follow the, uh, cross-section that the city has, um, I think would be very desirable.
Okay.
And more trees.
And more trees, I was just gonna, I was waiting for that Suzanne.
Well, I mean, it's pretty obvious.
Yeah, the, the whole interior should be just filled with trees and fountains, right?
Well, not fountains, but certainly trees, we need shade there.
Fountains in there, okay.
We will have a landscaping plan with, uh, plenty more trees, that's for sure.
Shade trees.
Okay, uh, who do I got next? John Regan?
Uh, thanks Rich, and good, I agree with everybody, it's a good looking project. Um, and it's not really a, a city issue per se, but, uh, given the history of this, the site, have you done any sort of updated environmental due diligence to make sure that when you're doing construction and particularly given the fact that you're gonna be doing housing and you're probably getting financing? But, so you can manage anything that you may encounter there, just from, you know, sort of legacy issues. Have you done that?
We haven't done any environmental testing, but there has been plenty of, uh, testing that has been on the property. Uh, and it has been, uh, certified to a certain level. Um, but from that perspective, we will have to do things, uh, because it will be residential. Uh, in the areas that will be having grass areas, we'll be bringing in additional fill material, clean fill to encapsulate the areas that may have any problems. Uh, and then where there are some areas that still need to be cleaned up, they will be taken care of to, uh, to a point. Uh, but there is plenty of documentation on this property already. We will go through most likely, uh, later on this year to do a, 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 a site-wide testing, just a a ra- not a random, but a controlled grid type testing, just so we have a better understanding.
Great, thank you. And the other thing I was gonna say, the city's in the process of, of adopting a trail master plan and there may be trails down around this area, I can't remember Beth, but, uh, it, it's something worth talking to the city about if they've got trails that are planned for here. It might, might be a nice, uh, amenity for the residential component.
That's a great, that's a great point, John.
Trails, thank you.
Yes, I, I don't know.
Yes, I don't know off one, and I would have to get that from Beth and Heather in that respect.
Mostly with the gas holder project, even though it's a little farther down the corridor.
Yeah, to tie them together a little bit. Great. Looks like I still got Byron and Suzanne's hand up, but I think you're up on the floor and John's hand up.
I do have another question, though, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, considering, and thanks, thanks to John for raising the issues about the, you know, the history of that site. Are you planning on on building on foundation or slab?
Foundation. We're doing geotech out there now just to see what the structural capacities of the soils are. Right now, everything's leaning towards that we can go conventional footings. We'll have to remove whatever fill material underneath it, of course, but that, right now, knock on wood, that's what it looks like.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the board? No? All right, let's let's see if there's any member of the audience that has questions, Heather. Looks like we got one person up with a hand up.
It is Mr. Hershlag, who I will want to panelist to ask the question. Hi, Alan, I promoted you to panelist and you are now free to unmute or end or go on video.
There you go.
Thank you.
Say your name for the record.
Sure, Alan Hershlag, a resident of Concord. Good evening, folks. So just a couple of thoughts, one specific to the project and one general. I was wondering if the developers have considered or would consider mixed income development. Once again, we're seeing another residential development that will be segregated by income. So perhaps they could could take a look at whether or not it would be feasible for them to move forward or at least take a look at a mixed income project. My second thought is fairly general, it doesn't have anything specific to do with this, but I've noticed over the last year or so, a significant number of trees are being cut down and trimmed by the utility companies. And this is probably more specific for the tree committee. But I was wondering if the city, I think I talked with Beth about this a while back, if the city went to approach or would approach some of the utilities and talk to them about a matching grant for replanting trees. That's pretty much it. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hershlag from the board or the members? Thank you very much for your testimony, Alan. Okay, any other questions from the audience? I don't see any other hands up. Any other questions from the board, comments? Again, I think it's a it's an excellent looking project. I don't know that we we have anything more on it from a, you know, from a recommendation standpoint. I looked through the review comments. I think the planning board can look at it from approving the comprehensive development plan for mixed use phase development of Langdon Avenue, subject to the applicant addressing review comments of satisfaction of engineering planning staff. Is that, Heather, is that the recommendation that's on the table as far as moving the the CDP forward for them to to kind of take the next step?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Beth, but I believe that is what we're saying.
So is it the full motion and and the vote on recommending that they they move forward with the comprehensive? We like the comprehensive development plan and they can move forward?
That's pretty much, yeah, that's that's what they were looking for tonight, that's what we're recommending so they can go forward full force with their site plan application.
Okay, so I'll make a recommendation that the that the planning board likes the likes the the concept and approves the comprehensive development plan for the mixed use and phase development in Langdon Avenue. Again, subject to the applicant addressing review comments, the satisfaction of engineering staff. Would someone like to make a motion or second that?
Second.
Motion was seconded by Jeff Santa Cruz. All those in favor, by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Hicks? Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Resounding aye.
Resounding aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Uh, member, I think that's everybody.
You got everybody, okay. And again, I think it looks like a great project. I do encourage you to to take a look at what what Alan Hershlag said regarding the the income levels. We do have an awful lot of projects on the slate for for income-related housing and, you know, we'd love to see some, maybe some higher-end projects in the in the works as well. So move forward and we'll hopefully see you back here shortly.
Very shortly, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, Heather, which is eight D. If we could read that into the record?
Ask my agenda.
Bricksmore.
Yes, yes. Oh, I know what it is. Novus Group, on behalf of Bricksmore Capital, request major site plan approval for construction of two new buildings, for restaurant, retail and coffee shop use with the drive-through facility at Eighty Store Street in Opportunity Corner Performance District. And I will let Sam give an update on this.
Sure, this will be a quick one.
He said it was completely in cheek, he says, right?
I will start with sharing our development concept that we had originally seen and council had seen back in August of two thousand and twenty. So this is where that two buildings come from. The this was a retail at originally, as well as the coffee shop with drive-through and proposed restaurant. This really exemplified that kind of Main Street feel with the buildings fronting on Store Street. Again, this was what was presented to council to amend the ordinance to allow a drive-through in the Opportunity Corner, Opportunity Corner, Opportunity Corner Performance District where that would normally not be allowed. One of the issues that came up, there were not enough stacking spaces in the drive-through lanes. So what we have before us tonight is.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, Sam. Do you have the elevations for that?
The elevations, I.
Or the.
Yes, I do. Yes.
That's what's giving you like sort of a clear sense of what council based their zoning approval on. Thanks.
Yep. Right, so that was the the concept. So this is what we have before us. We have talked with the applicant for many months following the zoning amendment approval, really continuing to focus on the the continuation of Main Street into this corridor. You can see that there are, and it'll be more clear in the elevations, but these patio areas, integrated landscape walkway area through here. This is an outdoor dining area for the restaurant. They have expanded the project scope. Originally, this box was just around here and they did receive a variance to isolate their area of the site that would need to be brought into conformance with the zoning ordinance. I did confirm with our zoning administrator that the expansion of the box would not require a revision of the of the variance or another trip to the ZVA. So with that, we'll flip over quickly to these elevations before we open it up to the applicant. And I would like to just touch on a few things that ADR had comments on. We had a very lengthy and I think very productive conversation at ADR over site layout and and building elements, one of which you can see in. This, so this is obviously the Store Street facade where if this is to be, you know, the the, you know, the real front of the buildings, the extension of Main Street, you know, this has that activated pedestrian space with the patios. Yet the the restaurant seems to be have a little bit of a blank wall where definitely this side is much more activated with the outdoor dining. And you can see in the floor plan for the restaurant, this blank wall is the result of the kitchen and the bathrooms right here. So that was discussed, potentially flipping this completely vertically where you have dining and entryway over here, bathrooms and kitchen back on this side, something that was discussed at ADR and that the applicant would bring back to One Ten Grill as an option. I think I'll stop there for now because there is a lot of ground to cover and I would like to have the applicant jump in before I just continue to rattle on.
Yeah, so let's let's welcome them to the table if we could. Heather, open them up for, I can't see it on my screen, who's out there, but. Whoever's out there for the attendees, if you could raise your hands.
Chris Neto, Ruben Turski. I don't think that might be it. Ruben and or Chris, do you have anyone else that you would like me to?
Nope, that's it. Thanks, Heather. Well, hello again, everyone. It's Chris Neto from Novus Group, back again. Save the best for last, so if I can share my screen again. And I'm joined by Ruben Turski from Bricksmore. Let's just find the right screen here. All right. Everyone can see that, hopefully. So this, just to orient you, this is Capital Shopping Center. We've got Marshalls over here on the north side, Burlington Coat, a market basket on the south side. So the development's focused on the central part of the site and the the main signalized entrance off of Store Street and Pleasant Street Extension. So we're proposing roughly sixty-one-hundred square foot restaurant to be occupied by the One Ten Grill. The second building, no tenants yet, but that will just be general retail as they get tenants, could be multiple tenants or a single tenant. The third building is a quick serve restaurant. And Starbucks is the intended tenant for that building with a drive-through, which you see over here. We are doing some other improvements to the to the plaza to maximize the amount of parking. Although we have a variance for parking, we're still required to have just under eight hundred parking spaces. But we are adding parking in front of the plaza itself, head-in parking here. As it is now, this is just a big wide drive aisle out front. And we're we're sort of narrowing up the main access drive to the signal. Right now, it has two slip lanes, one on the north that slips out and has a right turn lane to go north on Stores. And then incoming slip lane coming into this side of the parking. And so again, we're narrowing that up, like creating sort of this public space at the corner and a drop-off area on the side. And I'm just gonna switch my view to the the rendered view of the site plan, give you a better view. Intent is for One Ten Grill to have their outdoor patio. It's a it's a big signature of One Ten Grill if anybody's ever been there before. That'll be off this this side. The main entrance door is on the cornerback here, so the people can either park, can be dropped off or can walk from from Store Street into the site. And we do have sort of a public plaza area designed here out in front of the One Ten Grill. And then over to the Starbucks and the the future retail tenant, there's a big patio out front. There is a great difference, quite a bit of a great difference between Store Street and the parking lot. So we have a set of stairs here and then a nice retaining wall, seat wall up here and then a ramp down to the to the sort of open area plaza down below. There is pass-through, the ability to pass through to the backs of the buildings and the parking lot. As I mentioned here, we have a drive-through with eleven stack spaces for Starbucks. And then everything's really flanked by two pedestrian walkways that that will allow people to walk into the site and use the rest of the plaza, something that's not really there now. And Ruben, I'll turn it over to you if you wanna you wanna chat a little bit about the architecture and the discussions that we've had with the city. I'm gonna pull up the overall rendering of what the site looks like.
Great, thanks, Chris. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. As Sam alluded to and Heather could attest to as well, we've been over the last couple of months, been meeting with staff and presented to the ADR, working diligently to meet the goals and needs of both the city and and the tenants we are in discussion with. So it, sorry, Chris, if we just go back to the overall rendering of the site plan. You know, one thing that Sam opened up with was kind of the evolution since August two twenty twenty, when we presented this to council. And now, and I would say really the only major difference is we separated the two buildings to with a small little plaza in the in between them. One to activate kind of the pedestrian walk-through between the two, as well as, as everybody can imagine today, we're in a tougher environment in retail and unfortunately, that middle building, we don't have current tenants. So we're looking to phase this development. You know, the One Ten Grill is signed and ready to go. We are in discussions with a tenant like Starbucks to occupy the the building to the right. But we have no discussions on the future tenant. It could be one, it could be two, it could be three tenants. So that's kind of the major reason why we changed to separate them a little bit. But in terms of architecture and the overall feel, we've actually feel this plan is better in discussions with Heather and staff, you know, introduction of these big plazas in front of the tenants, the big patios, kind of the curvature of of the sidewalks, not just keeping them in plain, but really integrating the grade and some benches and walkways and some public spaces along the frontage of Store Street to really activate it. Which, Chris, if you go back to the renderings, you'll see that depicted in the overall. As Chris said, you know, large patio to the left off of One Ten Grill, this this kind of cut off a little bit on the circle, kind of public gathering space to the side of that patio. But you can see in front of One Ten Grill, which is really flanked by landscaping. And as we explained to ADR, you know, we we want the we want the buildings to be kind of in the background and the landscaping to be in the forefront. We did hear loud and clear some of the comments from the ADR when we presented them to bring some better material connections to downtown and Main Street. So we are continuing to work on those and and plan to present that to the ADR in the next meeting. But from a from a conceptual site plan, I think the ADR was very happy with what we came up with. There are just some architectural elements that we got to improve upon that we we plan to present as well. So again, you know, I feel architecturally, in terms of activation of Store Street, we still are meeting the the goals. And we still have some work on the architectural, but I'm happy to listen to comments from the board, so.
Okay, I'll start. Can we go to the the overhead view of the of the site and zoom in on the the drive-through? So I've I've never seen a drive-through like this. If you can explain to me how the double stack works, is it a? Do you have to bump out and then come back in and then is that an overflow lane that kind of goes to the right?
Yeah, it's an overflow lane. The the main lane would be the stacking to the right. I think as everybody's learned during the pandemic, some of our drive-throughs are getting a little bit longer rather than the typical demand. You know, most, this is a typical demand stacking from order, from pickup window to the to the end tail. But we feel in conversations both with the tenant, kind of our history of what we've seen during COVID nineteen and talking to staff, we wanted to, you know, increase this overflow lane so it didn't go into the parking lot and kind of create a a cluster inside the parking lot, so.
So if you can just scroll to the left a little bit over towards the other end of the of the development there. So I know there's been significant talk regarding the entrance. And again, you know, what we saw before, you know, you'd said it wasn't that different. I I think it's marketably different than what we had looked at, which was much more focused. You know, I you'd said it wasn't that different. I I I think it's marketably different than what we had looked at, which was much more focused on. Uh Store Street and and this seems to be a little bit more. I mean, I love the outdoor dining. I love the the one ten grill. I think that would be a great addition to downtown. But again, I I'm concerned about the about the the back of the building, kind of. How, you know, on Store Street and, you know, whether it's a faux front or whether there's, you know, some mechanism to be able to. To tie that in. I I don't know what it is, but I I know that, again, there's significant discussion. I read the A D R minutes about flipping the. Flipping the uh, you know, the the uh the kitchen and the and dining area. I don't know if you can address that or they were amiable to that to that. Or somehow getting uh some life on the front side of that building from Store Street, because it's just a big flat nothing right now.
Yeah, um so that that's what I talked to before. I mean, I think architecturally, we still have some work to do, which which we're working on. We are in further discussion with this tenant. Um I think most people on this call. A tenant like one ten grill who has other locations, um they have their operations down to a T. It took them a long time to actually come around and put their patio on this on the on the left side. Of the site rather than the west um and to bring that activation and the kind of the the middle door and the front door. Towards uh Pleasance Pleasant Avenue Extension. Um and and I think from a walkability standpoint, I mean, that middle door off the patio. Is still really going to be activated and people can come in there. Um they're in the mindset that. Majority of their people are still going to be driving and we're pretty insistent that the the front door is still kind of inside the um. The shopping center. Um and that's why we kind of push them back a little bit. Um and created this really nice landscaping foreground in the in the front of the building um to really push that. If if the previous images showed kind of entrances off there, that that was my bad. Um I I don't think that was ever the intention. It kind of maybe the architect uh led to that, but um this is the way one ten grill operates. And they say if they deviate anywhere from there, um they unfortunately walk from the site. So we've been holding their hands um for the last year and a half and trying to convince them. Uh we still have a little bit nudging to do with them, um but I think we 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 met a pretty good compromise with them to get them on the site, so.
So tell me if uh if one ten grill is built and the uh the building in the future tenant space that's there. Logic tells me that the future tenant space, front entrances are going to be inside the inside the space as well. So they're going to be facing into the into the shopping center as well.
Um I wouldn't say for sure. I think they'll be dual. Um I I I think um. We try to create these out parcels with four sided architecture, um right? They're still gonna have the patio. So if it is a restaurant in the corner closer to one ten grill, um there could be dual entrances. And obviously, they'll have to be entrance to the patio. Um the official, if it is a restaurant, the official maitre d desk, whatever you want to call it. Hostess, I I don't know, um depending on the tenant, it could be on either locations, so. But um based on kind of our previous experience, you know, we feel people still will drive to the center. So um you you kind of have a little bit of both, so. And it's a struggle. It's a struggle sometimes when you have these these out parcels fronting a street and, you know, what what is the front door? Um that's why we try to create, you know, rather than than a typical shopping center where you have a real back door. You know, we try to create create a four sided architecture here and not a back door, so.
Okay, Council Champlain, you have a question?
Yeah, uh yeah, uh we really have a a comment. Well, a question is this, the uh on the the. Elevations that you provided in your packet, I think you got your directions kind of screwed up.
We do. I apologize for that. Yes, the A D R pointed that out to us, so.
I think you might have misspoken because you said that 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 uh one uh one ten grill. And wanted to put the plaza on the west side and I think you're probably talking about the east side because the west side is actually where we would like it. Which is on Store Street. Is that, is that the case? Did you misspeak on that?
I misspoke, yeah. Chris, correct me.
Yeah, it was on the south side. They originally had more separation between the future tenant and they were shifted more towards the intersection and then the. The uh outdoor dining was in this area.
Well, I I have to say, you know, I'm one of the city councillors who voted to change the zoning here and I I did that kind of, I kind of held my nose. Because I I've been feeling, I felt like many of us, that it's really important to start to build out onto Store Street. And I really applauded Brixmore for 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 starting the trend or for picking up and continuing the trend. Uh with some of our other smaller scale developments. But but this is really, you know, I'm I'm almost feeling like this is a bait and switch, uh and I understand you're dealing with. Uh a national chain, which is one of the reasons I usually don't eat at national chains, that has their their mindset. And this is the way they do business and whatnot, but. It boggles my mind why anyone would want to have tables looking out onto a parking lot rather than looking out out onto a busy pedestrian thoroughfare. And, you know, I I I appreciate the landscaping that you've done on the west side, uh which frankly, I think is lovely. Uh the west side of the of the one ten grill, uh but uh, you know, uh. To to say that I'm disappointed is is I guess being polite. I I, you know, this is not the image that the master plan or that the Concord twenty twenty planning has had for this for this street. Um you know, um I noticed that in the in the plans uh that you provided most recently. Starbucks is not there. It's a generic uh fast food restaurant type of thing. I would be deeply concerned if we find suddenly that there's a Burger King or a McDonald's here. It it's just very disappointing and and honestly very troubling.
Okay, thank you, Byron. Uh Jeff?
Uh a few things, um site circulation in general. I am a little concerned as a traffic engineer. I am still trying to figure out exactly how that uh. Drive through lane is going to work, because if I'm stacked in that outside right lane, like you said. And I'm four cars back from the order board and somebody pulls into that right lane trying to cut me off. Can't imagine that being something somebody wants to do. Um I also noticed this has no bypass lane. So if those two sets of lanes are completely jammed up, it really has no bypass lane, which is, I believe. You know, something that is required in the ordinance. It strikes me that if you are parked in those parking spaces to the right of the drive through, you don't really have an easy way to get to. What you're calling the front kind of patio area, those buildings, you have to walk all the way across. Across open parking lot, across the drive through lanes to get to what is shown on your elevation, the back of the Starbucks building. So then you have to come down this alleyway between the two buildings to get to what you call the front. Rather than having something that maybe goes as a sidewalk between Store Street and the drive through area. So you can connect right into those front pieces, that kind of get keeps that open feel that, you know, um. Council Chapel was talking about. I do note that there's a wall that actually separates kind of that curving walkway by one ten grill. From the other tenant spaces, so it's not connectivity like you would have on a main street when you're up along buildings and you can. Walk right along the storefronts and whatnot. Kind of lastly, is I've have a lot of comments that I've given to staff that are more, you know, particular locations. Lot of them mimic what engineering said, but. You mentioned this area over to the left on the existing driveway as being a drop off. And I see that being a traffic nightmare. I see somebody coming. Right in from Store Street or straight across from Pleasant Street and someone else trying to pull out of that spot at the same time. You're just adding more confusion into this area. If you have that shown, I think it's shown as a loading area, which to me strikes traffic or trail truck loading of materials into the building. But I I don't know how I would feel comfortable having that be a a vehicle drop off. I mean, the parking lot, you kind of, I bet you if I measure from the front door to that loading area to the front door to some of those first parking spots. There's no difference or very little difference in the distance. I I don't know if I would feel comfortable, you know, kind of supporting that type. And then certainly, you know, I think you need to take a little better consideration of accessibility. Uh of the existing signal and the changes you're going to be making here to these curb lines in terms of ADA. Uh walkability, um this, I noticed this curb line shown on this landscape plan coming in from Store Street doesn't actually match the site plan. Um so I'm just kind of curious how trucks are going to get into this area and how they're going to route through. So it's really just these site circulations. Uh I think having a development is a great idea if we can meet with the master plan and and bring these developments so they really function off of Store Street. I think that's a great feel. Um and and I'm supportive of the development in general. If we can maybe sort out some of these issues that A D R has, um some of the landscape, things like that, and maybe address. Some more, a little bit harder look at the site circulation.
I still got Byron's hand up. You all set, Byron? Okay, Jeff, thank you, Jeff. Uh other members of the board, questions, comments, concerns? Any more hands? You know, I had made the comment, um. I had made the comment, I think, way back when we originally had seen these original drawings that, you know, that my concern was. This low development, this single use pad development type stuff, whatever you want to call it. You know, we're we're here for the long run. We're here for forty years down the road. These buildings are, you know, decades down the road. These buildings aren't probably going to be a. A one ten grill and a Starbucks or other fast food or whatnot, you know, I I I I'm concerned that. We're setting a precedent with this type of development for the next spot down and the on the on the northern side. So on the other side of the intersection, that we get a Taco Bell and then a seven eleven and and it just not what the master plan has. It's not what the uh what the envisioned and the original proposals were, so as much as I want to see development start. I want it to be right. I want it to be uh purposeful. I want to look at it and say, you know, hey, that's. That's a great development and it really complements uh, you know, the 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 downtown corridor. And and I just don't feel that this does. I mean, again, I I I take the tenants out of the equation in this case, so I don't care who the tenants are. Um I think, and I agree with Byron, I think the building shifted way over towards the towards the road and the and the eating space in the middle. Is a much better idea or even better, the eating the eating space near the road. You know, from a from a feedback perspective, we we, you know, we. We can sit here all day long and say, well, I'd love to see, you know, Starbucks. I'm not a Starbucks drinker. I don't care who's in there. I do care about the circulation of the drive and I do care that there's, you know, that it's going to be a kind of a drive through growing right up next to the road. But that's that's that ship has sailed, so uh I I'm concerned. I I share the concerns of the others and I think uh. I think the recommendations through A D R and some of the comments about A D R are are down the road. I think those, you know, ethos and 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 cladding and whatnot isn't as important to me as as the. The the look and feel of these buildings and I don't think they meet the they the intent of what the, you know, the original concepts were and. Again, I I I don't want to be the, you know, the person saying that, you know, it doesn't mean what the vision is because the vision can be anything. But I don't think we're, I don't think we're close. I I think it's a it's a ways away. And Byron, I still got your hand up. You all set? Okay, alright. Any other questions, comments, concerns? And again, our our recommendations on this aren't to move forward, but uh. But to, in our in our packet, we've got a recommendation to discuss the proposal with the applicant. Uh give them feedback, continue the application to the May nineteenth Planning Board meeting to give A D R C. A chance to engage in a design charrette with the applicant and address the issues raised regarding the character of the development. And the consistency with Main Street and the O C P uh O C M P. And you guys from the design team, so Ruben and and Chris, you guys heard that feedback regarding a a design charrette. And you're on board with that. You think that's a valuable a valuable use from your perspective?
A hundred percent. We've been in uh contact with Sam uh to schedule that and Sam, hopefully, maybe one day next week prior to the uh actual A D R meeting. We can get that scheduled, that that their members of the uh of that commissioner board can can attend, so.
Okay, and I'd I'd encourage any of the any of the planning board members to attend that as well, whether as a private citizen or. Just to attend and listen and hear what what the feedback and the comments are, but I I'd love to hear some public testimony. I'd love to hear. You know, what people downtown corridor, what other businesses feel and I. I I hate to make decisions in a vacuum without a lot of input and and I I feel like we're we're there at this point, so. Okay, any other questions from the board, comments? Last chance before we uh. Make a recommendation to push this off to the May nineteenth meeting?
Hands up in the attendee section.
Okay, yeah, we do have those. I'm sorry. Any other questions from the board? Good with the board? So Heather, let's get uh, we get two attendee, I think, hands up, if you can.
I'm not sure if I had their hand up first, but I'm gonna uh promote Claude um first. To panelists so he can. Share his comments and you. Claude, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Heather. Um and Richard. Um I appreciate, I think. I think I can say that the 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 whole committee uh would appreciate all the comments of yours, Richard and. And yours, Byron, and um. Jeff, yours also. Um and the only thing that I wanted to say. Uh was it's not, it's way out of the ordinary for the A D R to be willing to do a. Sit down with an applicant. You know, we I think it it makes a statement. Uh from A D R that we also value the development. Along Store Street, but we are also very concerned with how well it's done. So I just wanted the applicant to know that. It's 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 not something that we do. But we're willing to talk about it in this case. Thank you for that.
Great, thanks, Claude. And who is the other person, Heather?
Um Alan Herschlag. So I will put Claude back. Yeah, I'm promoting Alan to panelists.
Um good evening again. Um you can hear me?
Yes.
No, thank you. So good evening again, um Mr. Chairman, members of board and staff. I'll apologize for um mimicking uh uh s- some of the chair's comments. Um and I'll also apologize because this isn't going to be as short as my previous comments. So I think this project uh proposes a significant new development of Store Street and will set the tone for future development. It's therefore imperative that the redevelopment of this area meets the goals of our master plan and the vision of our community. With potential significant additional residential development adjacent adjacent to and in the downtown. It is even more important to encourage development that meets our goals of a walkable and bikeable community. Think of the the South Main Street project that you heard about tonight, um the Lincoln Financial property, um think of the. The potential for uh residential development um on 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 that site. And is and it is just as important that the development reflects the character and the history of our city. I have one more comment here. So I I I'll conclude with, I strongly um urge uh the board to accept the recommendations in staff's report. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate your testimony. Uh any questions for Mr. Herschlag before you let him go? No? Okay, thank you again. Uh any other questions from the audience, Heather? I don't see any other hands up, no? Okay, so let's uh, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll send everybody back to the uh. Attendees, thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony, Chris and and Ruben, thank you. And appreciate the time and energy you guys are spending on this. We know it's, we know it's a big project, so. Okay, so uh before us, uh board, for the board, again, we have the recommendation to discuss the proposal with the applicant. And continue the application to the May nineteenth Planning Board meeting to give A D R C a chance to. Engage in a charrette with the applicant and address the issues uh regarding the character development consistent with the Main Street O C M P. Would someone like to make a motion to? No, someone like to make a motion to continue the application to the May nineteenth meeting, I guess is the best way to put it, right, Heather?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Council Champlain, seconded by Jeff Santa Cruz. All those in favor? My roll call?
Chairman Woodson? Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Uh, Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Rosenberger?
Aye.
Okay, that, uh, clears us up from our public hearing, uh, portion of the exciting portion of the meeting. Uh, it is getting on in time here. I want to kind of finish up quick if we can. Uh, what time is it? It is ten twenty eight, so let's see if we can get through this quick. Uh, we've got item nine A. If we could read into the record, Heather?
Yes. I want to propose nine A. Is a proposed amendment to Article twenty eight seven two subset, subsection E, table of off-street parking requirements to require eleven stacking spaces for a drive-through restaurant regardless of the number of order or pickup windows. And Article twenty eight seven seven D stacking spaces to clarify that stacking spaces for multiple ordering stations may count towards the required total. So this is an amendment that, that came from staff, essentially it came from administration because we repeatedly were having, uh, applicants requesting, uh, variances. So in, in, in our current ordinance, the way it reads, if you have two ordering stations, you have to provide eleven spaces for each ordering station, which doesn't really seem to make much sense, be, because providing multiple ordering stations is, is a good thing. It can minimize the amount of traffic and make it, make the drive through lanes move more efficiently. But what we had been doing was requiring, if you had two ordering stations, you were required to provide twenty-two spaces, which is, is really onerous and sort of unreasonable. So we don't actually, I don't think we have anywhere where the du- du- dual ordering stations do actually provide twenty-two spaces. Um, so we're just, uh, we're just trying to basically, it's kind of housekeeping. We're just trying to fix it so, so it makes more sense.
Yeah. Okay, any questions regarding this, uh, this ordinance change? Anybody like to make a motion to, uh, no public hearing or anything, Heather, on this, right? Just, uh?
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing and ask if, uh, any member of the audience has a question or concern regarding this ordinance change? If you could, uh, make yourself known to the host. If not, we, the four attendees who are remaining, we will assume they don't have a question and we'll move on, close the public hearing. And would someone like to make a motion to, uh, propose that amendment change to Article twenty eight seven two B regarding, uh, table of off-street parking requirements to require eleven stacking spaces total?
Some of them.
Second.
Suzanne made, uh, the motion and, uh, Jeff seconded it. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberger?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have some discussion regarding new architectural design review committee member submissions. Um, Heather, I'm wondering, given the late hour, if we could put this off until next month. I know we need members of the architectural designer view, but I have got another inquiry today, uh, that I'd like to, that out a little bit and figure out if it works. Uh, I don't know if we can put that off till next month, or I know the board is probably going to say yes immediately, but I'm asking you if, if it, uh, would hurt us from one more month to not have a, any recommendations to add new ADR members?
Um, I will ask Sam if he's had trouble making quorum.
It has been an issue in the past. Um, we've been able to make do. Um, and when we don't have a quorum, we can't really make formal recommendations to the planning board. Um.
So how about this, Sam? How about?
What if we, what if we recommend one?
There's one recommendation that I want the lighting person, the resume that I saw regarding the lighting person. Um, could we make that recommendation? And then I know we got one more spot and I got one more person that I'm interested in, but I specifically, I like the lighting, I don't know Sam, if you have any fe- feedback or thought, but I, I liked that person a, a lot. Uh, and I like the other two a lot as well, but I, I really want to, uh, hear out this other person that expressed a little interest as well.
Sure, I think that's a great compromise. Um, we have an after, someone with some lighting experience for quite some time and to have one, um, answer the call, um, so quickly is, is really fantastic. Um, I spoke with him today and he's very technically savvy. I think he'd be a huge asset to the committee.
Okay, um, so.
Can I just, can I just ask, how many, how many openings are there?
Two. Two.
And in, uh, and that is all the, um, that will fulfill the whole design review?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I had a question regarding, uh, the alternate as well, um, and, and getting a person on as an alternate. I didn't have an answer when the person asked me.
I think that's a good idea. I don't know if we have alternates for ADR.
I'm gonna, I want to look, I want to look into that because I, I think I've got at least two other applicants that I know their resume that we looked at were very good.
Let's just kick some people off.
Yeah.
Claude and Jay still on the call?
So I, I think Jay's still on the call. He and Claude dropped off, so. Uh, so let's make, can, can we, what do we need to do to make a recommendation? I, I, you know, I, I know you guys haven't probably even seen the resume or, uh, experience.
If you want to do the lighting guy, just make a motion to appoint him.
And I, Zeron, Zeron, I can't remember his right sp- the right pronunciation of his name, Sam. Is it Zeron?
Um, he didn't say his name during the meeting, so I couldn't quite tell you.
It looks like Zeron.
There. So you don't want to make another Claude mistake. Okay, so Mr. Zeron, I'd like to propose that Mr. Zeron be, uh, added to architectural design review as a full member immediately and require him to be at every single meeting going forward. No, I'm only kidding, but like to make a motion, I think that Byron just, uh, just seconded that motion that, uh, we, uh, we appoint Mr. Zeron in as a full member of architectural designer.
Chairman, I think it's Mr. Zeron Simonis.
Zeron Simonis, that's correct. So is that a motion, uh, Mr. Champlin? Would you like to, uh, make a motion to approve him? Okay, so we got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt Hicks. Uh, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberger?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye.
Okay, and I promise I'll let you go after making one little quick comment here regarding the OSI's twenty-seventh annual spring gala, the planning and zoning extravaganza to be held virtually on Saturday from nine to three, uh, uh, nine AM to three to twelve PM. Uh, it's a virtual conference. It's open to all of us. If anybody would like to attend, please, uh,
It's free.
Let Lisa know it is free and it is, I went to one, uh, I can't remember who I went with, but I went a couple of years ago with one and it was very good. But it is all day Saturday on May fifteenth, so. If you'd like to attend, let Lisa know. She'll get your details regarding signups. Uh, any other business to come before the board tonight, or we can call it a night? If not, I will gladly accept a motion to adjourn if someone like to make that motion. So moved. Motion is made, uh, by, by Jeff, seconded by David Fox. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodpin?
Aye.
Council Champlin?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
I guess so.
Member Fox? Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Smith Meyer?
Aye. Am I the last one?
Member Rosenberger?
Oh, me. I just, I just want to tell you a very funny story that happened to me at Job Lot. I walk into Job Lot with my mask on and a hat on and I started asking questions and the guy goes, are you like on the city council or something? And I said, no, I'm planning board. He goes, oh, I watch that all the time. Recognize me or did you recognize my face?
Oh, my goodness.
Isn't that funny?
You'd be surprised, people.
Shout out Suzanne.
People do, people do watch it.
Give him a shout out.
Then we don't even know you look like anymore.
I was just gonna, I was gonna say, how does he know what you look like? You're just a blank screen.
Is there a car parked outside your house right now?
It must be. Just a reminder, it's John Regan's last meeting, I believe.
I was gonna say, I.
Oh, no.
You stole my, you stole my thunder.
No.
John, uh, John has.
One more, John?
John has put in his papers and he's, he's declared no mask.
Do we have to find a replacement? Hey, we need a replacement. Maybe one of those guys in D, ADR would want to be on the planning board.
You're, 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 I'm gonna give you one of these Suzanne. Can you see me? Yeah, it's right on.
Where are you going, John?
So, John is calling it a day, rightfully so.
Okay, John.
I think he, I think he has one more. I think he said he has one more meeting.
One more meeting.
One more meeting. Oh, good. I'm not rushing you to leave the committee, trust me.
Gonna come loaded for bear next week, next month, right, John?
Yep, gonna make up for ten years.
Yeah. Okay, we've had a motion to adjourn and we are adjourned. Thank you everyone for your, for your.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good luck to y'all.